Thirty-three, if you'd like to call roll please.
Mayor, where am I?
Present.
Councilmember.
Present.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Pelda.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
And Councilmember Lanza.
Here.
Mr. Carrow, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll remain standing just in a moment of silence for the family of the lots that are home over the weekend in our community and a member of the pueblo that was shot accidentally in a hunting accident, and all those others that are in need. Thank you. Approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of changes here. If under seven awards recognition, we could swap B with C. Additionally, under awards and recognitions, if we could add an item D, which is a presentation to our transit workers who we want to recognize tonight. And if under matters for staff, we could add an item G, which is a marketing and tourism contract with Griffin and Associates, and an item H, which is the possible lease of the old police, the police and E-911.
And council, any other changes or additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor, there are a couple of things I'd like to bring up. Perhaps I should do it in the public forum?
Okay. So, defining just for informational items?
Yes.
Anything from staff? Nothing from staff? Council?
We will move to approve the amended agenda.
We have a motion to approve the amended agenda. We have a second?
A second.
And a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, move on. The approval of the minutes. We have the minutes of March 11th, 2014, our regular meeting minutes. Council?
Mr. Mayor, on March 11th, page three, line thirty-six, Justin Lee is lean, but it's Lee, not a baby. Just want you to know, I'm reading, and see you later.
Anything else on the minute of the regular minutes of March 11th? Do we have motions that council? Who would approve this amended? As amended. Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go on to March 17th, 2014, special organizational meeting minutes. Council? Who would approve this? And a motion to approve? Second. And a second? Any further discussion? Not? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, we'll go on to March 19th, special meeting minutes. Council?
Mr. Mayor, March 19th, page three, line nineteen, I believe the, this is in reference to something I was talking about regarding planning and zoning, and that sentence, I believe you should read, has been decimated in exchange for not in disarray. And page four, line twelve.
Councilmember, please, let me say that again, page three?
Page three, line nineteen.
Okay.
And I believe the terminology used was that something like P and Z is in disarray, and the verbiage that I believe I used was, has been decimated. Page four, line twelve, regarding fire hydrants. The terminology used currently is that the hydrants will be flushed, and I believe what I said was that they should be checked and charged. Thank you.
Council, we have a motion.
Make a motion to, as amended.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Not? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go on to awards, a recognition. I truly like to recognize the Taos Ice, well, the Taos Ice Tiger Hockey Team. You know, I really, it's great to see you guys all here. I don't know if all of you guys got to make it here, but state champions, awesome guys. You know, it was really good to see you guys work together as a team. I got to see that state championship game. It was awesome. You guys were just, you know, the work, the teamwork that you guys put in, not only in practice, but as a team as a whole. You know, the coaches, the parents, the opportunities that you guys will, you know, this is something you guys will share for your, all your lives. Still, the people that I was able to, in the state championships, that I was able to participate, we still look back on those and laugh at the fun you guys had and the unity that you guys bring to each other. Your families, the way they able, were able to support you, the time they took to get you to practice, to get you home, the, the traveling that you guys had to do. I just really like to recognize you and, you know, just applaud you for your hard work. And with that, I'd like to give the opportunity to the council, and then I'd like to turn it over, and I'd like to give to Mr. Langraff, because I think it's a great opportunity. So, council?
Yeah, I think it's absolutely wonderful that you're
They might turn their mic on.
It's not on? It's wonderful that you're taking this opportunity. My son was also in, in hockey, and during that season, they won the state champions too. I believe the team at the time, it's been a while, was the Coyotes. And getting up at three and four in the morning to be where you need to be is really commendable, so, right on, guys.
We're proud to be able to have that brief there, and it's being used by our youth. Again, thank you. Councilman?
Again, just congratulations to each and everyone. It's always nice to see our, our youth accomplish something great. Nick, I see you in the audience. Congratulations to you as well, and your qualifications for state as well, on track. So, congratulations to each and everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, gentlemen, I would like to applaud you on your accomplishments and your championship, and also to recognize you as another year of championships for the Taos Hockey Program. How many have we had so far since we've opened the ring?
Councilmember, Mr. Mayor, there have been a total of seven high school state championships, and when you count all the youth league, the younger kids, there's been a total of twenty since we opened the ring.
Congratulations to your wonderful program for our youth, and keep this in mind, you are, should be proud to be part of such a great program in this community, and we look forward to having you also make it to better programs for the younger generations coming up in New Mexico, so that they can be state champions as well.
Alvaro?
Congratulations, man. I want to thank your moms and dads, and I'm going to take a slightly different slide. As we struggle to right our town's financial boat, you helped do that. You know how, by having a winning, successful team, a team where each member supports each other, becomes a natural draw for all of those teams from Texas, Colorado, Arizona. So, thank you, gentlemen, for helping our economic situation. It makes a difference. So, there's a slightly different slide for you. Thank you.
So, if you guys will all stand, so we can, please, all of you. Mr. Langraff, yield to you, sir. The councilor, Mr. Brown.
So, first of all, I have to say is that you guys make a huge commitment every year, every year that you do it. You have to wake up early in the morning, five thirty, six a.m. practice, every day, and extreme cold is just, so much goes out to you just to be able to do that in the first place. And if I knew how to stay, I'd definitely be out there right here. But you guys were state champions in the peer division with a three-one win over Los Alamos, which is impressive just in and of itself, just to beat Los Alamos, because they're a great team too. Just as, it shows that you have another trophy. Just because they're such a good team, you guys are both a powerhouse of the northern New Mexico for sure. So, I kind of counted that you guys had about seventeen games individually, multiple tournaments, and those are spread out through Texas, through Arizona, and such. And those are huge driving times, huge commitments. Everything goes out to you for how, how hard you worked all year to get where you are, and it definitely paid off. The last thing I have to say is that we have a really young team here with only three graduating seniors, and I'd like to see a state championship in the next few years. So, first, I'll go on to the coaches. Brian Greer. Charlie Rasponek.
Oh, good.
Jaammar Boden. Ben Gluck. And obviously the players. Mary Grammett. Yes.
Manager Mary.
Anthony Arzalenta. Simon Mount. Max Mount. Atear. No Garcia. Jake Ammon. River Chalker. My primo amigo, Nick Landman. Daniel Moberg. Chris Evans. All game good.
Senior of youth.
Angel Bruce. Keith and Berger, they're not present. Scott Nellows. Senior Arzalenta. Ray Gonzalez. Doug Bromley. Ethan Thompson.
Council?
Come on up.
Yeah, we might have to stand up here.
Someone here.
Squishy in here, squishy in here, Doug.
This direction. Great. Long shot.
Got it all done now? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, next, we'd like to move on to item three, proclamation for Telecommunicators Week, and, and just, we have a proclamation to present to, I know we have some of those dispatchers here, and we really like to recognize them, and I'd like to call them off right here because this, you know, a really good opportunity to, to, for you guys to shine, for people in the community to really know what you guys do. And the proclamation, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. Whereas, when an emergency occurs that prompts response from police officers, firefighters, and paramedics, is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our public officials, excuse me, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Taos Communications Center. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contacts our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their jobs in the past year. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Denveroni, Mayor of Taos, do hereby proclaim the week of April thirteenth through April nineteenth to be the National Telecommunications Week in Taos, New Mexico, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. So, I'd like to commend that. I don't know if you want to say a little something. I was able to, the mic don't bite. But again, it was great. I got to visit there a couple of times. It was great to see our dispatchers at work. I mean, you saw the calls come in, you saw them react to the calls, you saw them communicate, you saw them share information, and you saw them get people to the site where it was needed. It was, you know, it's awesome to see. I mean, if we ever, if we ever get that opportunity, what really goes behind these dispatchers is just wonderful. I mean, they're, again, they're our life link for our officers, our, our fire departments. When you make that call, they're their link between you and them. So, thank you again. And Mr. Bellis?
We have some plaques here, and unfortunately, not all of our dispatchers could be here because they work twenty-four hours. I'd like to thank you too. I know that you've had some hard times over the past two years. If a repeater went down, if the internet went down, if it was weather that disrupted communication, somehow everybody wanted to yell at you. But the reality of those is few people know the efforts that you all went through to make sure that no matter what was happening out there, utilities, what the disasters were, that you kept the lines of communication open, and because of that, lives were saved every day. I'd like to call out Jaco Romero. Randy Martines. So, when I've known you one time, surely more. Brandon Scott. Lorrie Weathers. In honor of National Telecommunications Week, we hereby honor Lorrie Weathers and our other dispatchers for consistent devotion to public safety dispatching, consistent excellence in customer service, and the continued pursuit of our goal of protecting life property while maintaining the highest level of professionalism. And with these papers, I guarantee you that within a year, one point four million dollars in public monies will be invested in new equipment and CAD software to help you do your jobs.
Do you want to mention the other, Rick, the other ones that weren't able to be here?
Those dispatchers employed with us that are unable to be with us tonight were Rebecca Rodriguez, Christopher Calhoun, Karen Fresquez, and Angel Martinez.
You spell so, maybe you want to stay here. I think we have the next, yeah, we have another presentation.
Oh, you can leave that.
Transit. You want to take them to school?
We have one more presentation tonight, which was the last of the country, and we're very proud of this, that for three years running, we should explain that those that are involved, our bus drivers, our van drivers, all those in the industry that support us through the chili line, participate in a competition, and maybe the only time you get to drive safe and crazy and get rewarded for it. And in all three years, all of our staff from here in Taos have finished in the top three in all of those categories, and typically in first place. And in recognition of that, Brandon Gutierrez, for winning first place in the van category in the 2014 Annual New Mexico Transit Association Bus and Van. Leo Valencia, for winning second place in the bus category. Madeline Gordon, for winning third place in the van category. And we should also mention that in 2007, the people you see up here in the Transit Department of the Town was named Transit Department of the Year, and they just weren't happy with that. So, they came back this year, and when the award came up for 2013 at the same competition, we were proud to announce that these folks over here brought that title back home again. So, a big round of applause. Is, Delilah Garcia here? And we want to recognize, want to stand on the table now, Delilah is the supervisor, acting supervisor for the Transit Department, and oversees all these fine folks. Make sure that they get that job done and get passengers safe every day. Thank you very much, Delilah.
So, next we'll go on, next we'll go on to item eight, Citizens Forum Citizens' Week. Wishing to speak shall have the opportunity to do so, five minutes, and no action will be taken. So, anybody, one at a time, come on up.
Coming to you.
Yes, please. Just your name for the record.
Yes. My name is Eric Lastone, and I live on Hurdner Road between Casao del Pueblo Sur and Salazar Road, across from the county road yard. First, let me congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, and you council members, on your election. I was not born and raised in this unique alley, but after living here for over forty years, I consider myself the Taoseno, with a small T. My son was born here at Holy Cross Hospital, graduated from Taos High School, and he is a part of the generation, and also the generation of these young people here that I'm concerned about. I come before you to discuss the need to preserve some of this beauty by creating green spaces. Twenty-five or so years ago, when we were being asked to accept being annexed into town limits, my neighbors and the town discussed with the county the possibility of moving the yard. At that time, the county chairman, Sostino Romero, used those dreaded words for politician. "We promise we will move the yard at our first opportunity." I'm not blaming my emphysema on the yard, but over twenty-five years or more of breathing that dust has not been kind to my lungs. I've heard recent rumors that this may actually happen, and the town may have an opportunity to acquire this land. Mr. Mayor, you are in the unique Mr. Mayor, you are in the unique position of possibly helping to make this happen. If the town gets this land, rather than using this land for developments that will pave over land and maybe make a small group of people money, maybe we need to do other things with that land. Maybe even someday that land might be needed for, again, growing, safe local food. I've talked to some of my neighbors, and we would like to offer a few alternative suggestions. Maybe a park strictly for toddlers and younger children, or a disc golf course, or best of all, a large community garden. This is our front door situation. Now I'd like to talk about our backyard. At the same time of being annexed, the town had plans to extend Cruz Alta to Salazar. After getting a petition signed by almost one hundred percent of our neighbors and meeting with the town council, we were told that because of our wishes and the expense of moving Plains Electric now tri-state high voltage lines, again, the word "promise" was used. We were told the most the town would do would be put in a walking park for people. Years later, when sewer lines were installed, I came before the council, and Mayor Bobby Duran acknowledged that he remembered that promise since he was a council member at the time it was made. I believe the extension of Cruz Alta is still on the map for the future. I would request that this council look at the possibility of removing that and leaving this land as is. People use it as a walking path, kids ride their bikes, people walk their dogs, and the expense of moving tri-state lines are still prohibitive. And as I'm an electrical contractor, I know the dangers of electric magnetic fields. Those lines are very close to my home, and I'm sure any attempt to move these lines to the south, closer to the homes, would probably require a full-blown expensive environmental impact statement. I believe every member on this council cares about maintaining this beautiful valley we live in, and every space saved from overdevelopment will enrich the lives of future generations. Thank you for your time and considerate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me.
Hi. My name is Gail Viola. I'm an objector to the Taos Pueblo Water Settlement, not so much because of what it proposes, but because of what it doesn't propose. This is a backup plan for the pueblo, the town of Taos, the Aseca associations, the community wells, the federal and state governments. What it doesn't address is the private wells in the valley, of which there are many. You can't just say we'll address the problem down the road when that may be too late. As far as I can tell, there is no disclosure as to the science behind the assumptions made by the settlement agreement. The two public meetings held in September and October of two thousand thirteen left more questions than answers. The settlement agreement is a safety net for the settlement parties. There needs to be the same accommodation for private wells. There needs to be an independent system to monitor the effects of the mitigation wells on the private wells, especially property in and around the Hondo Mesa, which it appears will be most affected by this agreement. There also needs to be funds allocated to assist with any adverse effects caused to private well owners because of this agreement. After all, a property without water is worthless. There appears to be a great deal of hidden, there appears to be a great deal hidden in the settlement about how things will work and where all the new wells will be. Public disclosure is a risk reduction factor which should appeal to such entities as the town of Taos. An all-inclusive monitoring system which is public domain would assure all Tausenos about the quality and quantity of our water for the present and the future. I urge the council to reevaluate the agreement and look for ways to protect all our water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Veroni, and council members. My name is Roberta Salazar, and I too am here to talk about the Abeta Settlement. And first of all, I want to clarify that I'm fully supportive of settling Taos Pueblo's Aboriginal water rights. However, I have concerns for how the settlement might impact the quality of water for the town of Taos. The town wells will be moved several miles to the west, closer to the Rio Grande in the area of geologic fault zones. Those wells will be one thousand to two thousand feet deep. According to geohydrologists, whenever you tap deep into a geologic fault zone, you're most likely to have serious water quality issues. This will be a change for town Taos residents, as up to now their water quality has been very good. Abeta makes funding provisions for treatment of arsenic if that shows up in the towns' leave-deep wells. However, it does not address funding for any other harmful constituents that may come up in those deep wells. Since the Abeta Settlement was designed, there's been new geohydrolog, geohydrolog data gathered adjacent to the town of Taos that discover not only arsenic, but also high levels of fluorides in deep well sites, in deep well test sites. Geohydrologists say there's also a possibility for uranium or heavy carbonates as well. No one knows till they drill what will come up in these wells. It'll cost about two million dollars for each well, so once it's drilled, they're not likely to close it or be used. That'll be the water that Taos has got. So it seems to me that it would behoove the town of Taos to request that financial accommodations be included in the Abeta Settlement to cover the cost for treatment of other harmful constituents that may be present in those wells, such as fluoride, or uranium, or heavy carbonates. If the Abeta does not stipulate this and ensure monies for the treatment of other substances, the people of the town of Taos will have to bear that financial burden, and that can be very costly. Maintenance of pumps and water lines could also be affected by changing water chemistry, especially if deep water sources have high mineral concentrations such as calcium carbonates. It is in the town's best interest to manage this risk proactively by helping to arrange for cost feasibility studies and by helping to make the preliminary water quality test data freely and publicly available. The town of Taos could benefit by supporting cooperative studies with the U.S. Geological Survey and/or the New Mexico Bureau of Geology, including monitoring of stream flow and water quality, and improved modeling studies using the latest tools such as integrated hydrologic modeling. These studies would help ensure the town's best interests are not forgotten. Improved information like this and transparent access to it will ensure protection for the community welfare. So we have a narrow window of opportunity, I believe, right now, since the settlement agreement is not absolutely finalized, and the town of Taos right now has the opportunity for more influence by trying to address these issues now versus once it's done. And so, I just ask you to really step to, up to this opportunity in leadership for the sustainability of our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
Rick, if you wouldn't mind doing us a, thank you, Roberta. If you would mind doing us a favor, I know a couple of years ago, when we, when the town looked at the Abeta water adjudication, it was my first year in office. And I know we had sat down with French, and we had analyzed some of the town's deep water well sources that lie within the town of Taos, and some of the concerns we had was that some of those wells in the agreement were supposed to be shut off for revitalization of the buffalo pasture. We were able to get through language that allowed us to keep them while they were still active. So I know in the interim, before the Abeta adjudication was actually signed, we've been working to get those wells as up to par as possible. So I guess what I'd like to see, you know, in the near future is, what's our life expectancy of those wells? And, you know, before we have to start going west, you know, out towards Claur and further down with regards to it? Because the concerns that I had at the time were, us pulling water from the west into the city, cost would be astronomical versus to what we have here in town. And also, you know, with geological or geologists are finding, geohydrologists are finding, concerns me as well with what lies further out that way. And I do agree with you that we need to, you know, we have a small window, I don't know how much can be changed up to this point. I think maybe MIBO can help us with that as well. But I do agree, if there's a window that we need to definitely look at, at least security laws. Thank you for your assistance.
And another thing is, we are, at the present time, trying to set up a meeting with the state or the officials to look at the Abeta water rights lawsuit, so that we can be brought all up to speed and know exactly what's going on. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Bellis. Mr. Mayor, town council, Mr. Bellis, I just want to thank you for, on your agenda, talking or listening about the fact that you're going to look at decisions regarding the spring ditch. I hope that we can put all of the stuff that has happened between the spring ditch and the town of Taos back on a back burner. But what we need to do is come to a solution. Here is a document that, I mean, there's documents going back and forth between the town and the spring ditch, box and box and box of documents. But the document that makes, the only document that matters to me is two pages that David Ryle wrote, first, I don't know, three or four years, well, the date on it is September twenty-ninth, two thousand nine. And that's where we told the town what we would like to have the town do, we would settle this stuff with the town. But the previous administration, which is no longer here, would not have anything to do with it. They kept saying that even though Mr. Cordova promised David and myself on several occasions that he knew that our ditch had been wronged, but that we might have to do a friendly lawsuit, but that he would take care of it. That's what he said when he was running two, four years ago. And then, he just forgot everything. He threw us under the bus. You, council members, and Mr. Mayor, as part of your campaign, promised, and I was very encouraged by what Mr. Veroni said, when he said, "We want to know if the Aseca's have standing in this community." And I believe, and I hope and pray that what you said during your campaign is what you followed through. I hope that in this item that you're going to discuss in executive session, that you give the spring ditch a fair chance. And we've felt, the town of Taos under previous administrations, in my estimation, has done irreparable harm to our ditch. And you may hear things like, "Well, that ditch isn't disrepaired anyway." But it's a disrepair because we started having problems in the seventies, when well number five was drilled by the town of Taos, and that lowered our aquifer in the area of the springs. So, as a result, we don't have a ditch anymore. I hope that based on this document that David wrote to you, we can come up to a solution. And I applaud you for taking the initiative to do this. I also would like to just make a couple of comments about the Abeta Water Settlement Plan. In my mind, the hundred million dollar package that was promised by the federal government and New Mexico State, State of New Mexico, put stars in the previous administration's eyes. I think that, I have a supervisor when I was working at Public Service Colorado, and one of the things that he told me was, "Jerome, if you take care of the little details, the big details will fall into place," or that they will take care of themselves. In my estimation, in the Abeta Water Settlement Plan, the little details have not been dealt with. As Gail Viola spoke earlier, and Roberta, what's going to happen if all of this, even though it's been modeled by engineers, and they say nothing's going to happen, but what if it does? Those details need to be worked out upfront. They didn't talk about how are you going to deal with spring-fed ditches. I mean, all of this stuff can be dealt with proactively. I thank you for your time. I hope you do the spring ditch some justice from now on. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and town council, and thank you to the previous speakers, because I'm also here to talk about the Abeta Settlement. And myself, and Roberta Salazar, and a group of concerned citizens have taken the initiative to hire expert hydrologists, and we've spoken to lawyers, not just in Mexico, but also out of state. We've also spoken to professors at the University of New Mexico who are experts in water law. And there is not a single individual that can really thoroughly explain the Abeta Settlement. For all of them, it's incredibly complex, and they're also admit that they do not understand the settlement. And that's a huge concern for us. And specifically, I'd like to ask about the mitigation wells. We've been really focusing on these mitigation wells, that the cost of these wells is going to be about a hundred million dollars. And there's no assurance, that I have seen, that this water will remain in Taos County, that the state is in a water emergency. We're being sued by the state of Texas, and Albuquerque and Santa Fe are at a war. They've tapped their aquifers, and they're going to have to rely on the Rio Grande. And there's no language in the Abeta Settlement that gives any assurance that this water will remain in Taos County. And these wells have an enormous capacity to pump water. And the most recent meeting we had was with Paul Bauer, who is senior geologist at the New Mexico Bureau of Motors, and he said, "This far exceeds what Taos County will ever need." And he said, "Taos has plenty of water, but these wells are a huge risk to our whole hydrologic system." And he says that there is nobody that knows what the effect of these wells will have on our hydrologic system. He said, "Potentially, you could have surface water streams like springs go dry." And so, I applaud you in making the effort to get more information on this settlement. And the other thing is, is that a hundred million dollars is an enormous amount of money, and there's not a single dollar that is allocated to make our current Aseca system more efficient. And our Aseca system is unique in the world, is one of our most precious resources here in the county, and there could be so much good done by putting some money into improving our ditch system, and it's what ties this community together. And as the price of water rights goes up, I mean, who knows how much water will be sold to outside interests? I think it's, it's got to be a major priority for this community to retain our water, so thank you.
Mayor Veroni, council members, under my role as spring ditch, and I think you all know that, maybe council members, obviously not, but anyhow, I am here, first of all, to thank you folks for having placed, like Mr. Luceto said, this item on the agenda, because that gives us light at the end of the tunnel. Because this has been a struggle that has stretched back over thirty years, trying to save this ancient Aseca. This ancient Aseca has a priority date of eighteen hundred. What that means, first of all, is that this Aseca was put in use before the state became the state of New Mexico. It is an Aseca that probably explains why the town plaza is what the town plaza is, because just down the hill from there was the big water because just down the hill from there was the big water source. I think for a lot of us, we can remember the water there. Surely some of us remember the gazebo that was there where the bell screen was just now, it had a little pond, and where the Smith parking lot is. There used to be, I don't remember if they were called case ponds or case lakes, or something like that, and they offered fishing. And just down from there, there was a fish hatchery, because this was how much water was present there. So out of those springs and out of this water source, there were springs behind McDonald's, there's still an old well house right close to where well number five is. All these sources were sources of water for the spring ditch. And I think if anyone should have been involved in trying to preserve this ancient aseca, should have been the town. Because all the asecahs, and particularly the ancient asecahs, is what defines this And it has been a struggle for us. You know, not just the townhouse, there's other culprits. There's the Department of Transportation that has turned our aseca into a storm drain. And of course, the city's also using it as a storm drain. And there's been permits issued by the townhouse to place structures over a lateral, over a point of diversion, but I don't want to belabor that point. We can't change history. History is what it is. And there were some leaders in this town that refused or for whatever reasons, did not in their decisions vote or make decisions in the best interest of our aseca. That would be their legacy, that they did not do anything to preserve something that was ancient, something that's protected by state statute. And I think we all know that if you just go down to the area, there is Hatchery Street. Why? Because there was a fish hatchery there before. There's Ojitos, a road named after all the springs that were there. And I think at the bottom line through this whole struggle, is that the spring ditch acted in good faith over and over and over again, trying to mediate with the townhouse, trying to reach some kind of agreement. And every time we were promised this and that, and it never came to fruition. But now we see light at the end of the tunnel, because I think in the election of you, Mr. Barone, Councilman Fritz Hans, and Councilwoman Judy can do, we can see leadership now. Mr. Bosales and Mr. Alcaranta, in you also, this is a new day. And we are filled with optimism now that somehow you will right the wrongs through this whole struggle. People have come up to me like Mr. Lucetto said a while ago, "Why are you trying to revitalize a ditch or an aseca that you yourself haven't used for thirty or forty years?" And my comeback to that has always been, "Why? Why haven't we used it?" The percentage of this aseca were fooled for twenty-five, thirty years. They were all of the mind that the aseca was drying out because we were in a drought. Everybody believed that. In the eighties, we tried to divert all the aseca water on our lateral to the agricultural land. The water never made it. But we were fooled. Everybody thought it was a drought until under the administration of Bobby Duran, when he went ahead and gave a permit to a developer to build over a point of diversion. That was the straw that broke the camel's back. We couldn't take it anymore, because if this was allowed to happen, deposition and the spring ditch. Out of the woodwork came the hydrologist. All of a sudden, we found out the truth. Well, number five has been lowering the water table, is what the hydrologist or the developer said, but we thought he was protecting the developer. So we hired our own hydrologist, Mr. John Schumaker, who's probably the most respected hydrologist in the state. It cost us a fortune to get him here. He went, did an extensive study. Again, he pointed the finger straight at the townhouse, and he says, "This development has nothing to do with your ditch. This development can be placed there, and the ditch is not going to change any." He says, "Who has impaired you is well number five." Will you indulge me for a little longer, Mr. Mayor?
Give me another minute.
Okay. So then the townhouse later on hired a hydrologist. Guess what the town hydrologist said also? The townhouse will have a hard time proving that they have not impaired the spring ditch. To us, that means that this case is won, but we're still trying to show the town good faith. And I think now when it comes to the agenda, you folks go to executive sessions, I'm sure that you will think about this ditch, because it's also what defines the town, and you will do good by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, if we'll just take you into the record.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman?
Thank you. My name is Jim Peterson. I'm the executive director of the Taos Community Health Plan. And the Taos Community Health Plan is a large group of physicians and clinicians, over a hundred. It includes the Holy Cross Hospital and the Taos Health Systems, as well as a number of private physician practices all over the area. We recently formed the Taos Behavioral Health Alliance. This is a group of behavioral health professionals that represent one of the very first groups of its kind in the country. And it's a direction that healthcare is moving in which behavioral health is becoming a center point for treating communities and making communities healthier. Recently, there was an incident very, very close to my home with a young disabled veteran, severely disabled veteran. And this young man began acting out, causing problems in the small condo complex that I worked at, I lived in. And authorities were called several times, only to be told that there was nothing that could be done because he wasn't doing anything illegal. Well, it finally got to the point where there was a call that broke the camel's back, apparently, and a couple of Taos police officers showed up to basically evict this young man. And instead of showing up and showing an unwanted aggression that could have come out of this kind of situation, they sat down and talked to this young man for over eight hours. They went to McDonald's, they got him food, and they literally saved his life. All of these actions and all of this, all of these outbursts, they were cries for help. And the officers involved were Officer Jenny Davis and, excuse me, Officer Austin Barnes. And I think these two officers should be commended, and if there's a forum or some sort of a award at the Taos Police Department, they ought to be considered for that. The Taos Behavioral Health Alliance has nominated these two officers for their first annual award. We haven't decided who the winner is yet, but those two individuals will be nominated and will be giving out this award next month during the Behavioral Health Awareness, a month of May. Anyway, I just wanted to make the council and Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make you aware of the fantastic work that was done by the Taos Police Department. They went way above and beyond and literally saved a young man's life. He's now receiving mental health treatment that he needs, and it's because of these officers that he's safe and alive, so.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, I just want to thank you for letting us know about Officers Barnes and Davis. And as a social worker, I've also been out on calls where the Taos biggie has been involved on a domestic violence situation or something like that. And I'm always impressed with the fine work, chief, that your men and women do. And I'm so glad that you took the time, Jim, as a representative of the physicians and the counselors of our community, to come out here, to wait an hour to speak, to let us know about two cops who reached out and saved a vet. You're also a veteran, I might add, so there's a lot of simpatico there. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
And I'm hoping that we can take action on this as the mayor and town manager see fit, perhaps next month during Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Paul Christie. And I've heard some really eloquent statements tonight, as we'll see by Mr. Rial about the spring ditch. And that's kind of a segue into what I'd like to talk about. And basically, it's about the airport. And I spoke to the finance department today because I wanted to find out the status of the airport. I wanted to see how much revenue it can get generated. And my understanding after speaking to them is that the airport is a met deficit to the town budget. So I'm asking myself, why are we funding an airport expansion? After listening to all these statements of our water problems, aseca problems, and so forth, we're going to be investing money in an airport that doesn't currently generate any revenue, probably won't generate it. It seems to me it's part of that, the 1% triple down philosophy. You build an airport, you build a stadium for the super wealthy, and that money triples down to the community. I think that's totally been totally discredited. And I don't see how we can justify spending a dime of the 99% of the Taos seniors who will never use the airport. I've been here twenty years. I know two people have ever used that airport. So what the town actually needs, I believe, other than all this work on the asecahs and other things that will really revitalize the town, agriculture and so forth, is a regular, reliable bus service to Santa Fe. And believe me, the blue line does not do the job. I've taken it once. And the only way you would get me back on that bus is at gunpoint. I'm sure we all know Taos seniors, with medical needs, some quite serious, who need to travel to Santa Fe and beyond. But even basic medical procedures like root canals now require visits to Espanola and Santa Fe. Yet we don't have reliable bus service. And so it doesn't make sense to expand the airport that no one is going to use other than, you know, a select few people. So I think the town's priorities are out of balance here. Good, reliable bus service will do more to boost our business prospects than upgrade an airport. But more importantly, it will enable the majority of Taos seniors, especially the aged and sick, to access greater health facilities. I know buses aren't sexy, they're not as sexy as airplanes or airports, but good accessibility to Santa Fe and the rail runner, making a connection to the rail runner, and also having to stop at St. Vincent's Hospital, would boost the ability of businesses to reach out to customers and would also help our depressed hotel industry. So imagine for a minute that the town comes up with a plan for an electric bus that will make the run to Santa Fe. And then imagine that the bus is charged with solar power. I think it would be a great pilot program. It might even create a mini industry in town. And on top of that, we could look for funding through two agencies, the Department of Transportation and the Department of Energy. I think it would generate a positive buzz throughout the state and beyond. And, you know, it might be an incentive for environmental and other organizations to submit Taos as a site for meetings and conventions because of something like that. So this is just one idea, but it's an idea that would benefit the majority of the people of Taos, not wealthy outsiders. And I know we have a lot of budget constraints, but there are, other than this, there are many projects that could be, that would be of better use for the people of Taos, like dance, community gardens, aseca revitalization, so forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have four topics. Above the full, front page article of this week's Taos News focuses on the monumental needs for maintenance at the Youth and Family Center. Just a few minutes ago, we recognized our state champion hockey team, just another in a long line of hockey champions. Youth and Family Center is a tremendous asset for our kids, and during hockey tournaments, a genuine economic driver as several hundred adults and kids spend three to seven days in Taos. I think sports, including building out the acro park, can easily become a huge economic driver, beginning with high-altitude training. I'll save my thoughts here for another day. The Fourth of July fireworks show must be discontinued or moved. Most years, the display costs around $22,000, and I'm unsure if this includes the cost of insurance. The noise is frightening for animals, particularly dogs who are within several miles of the fireworks. Strahan's Animal Shelter is just a few hundred yards away. The shelter may go to a great trouble to find foster homes for some of the dogs on that night, but many remain only because traumatized. Some suggest moving the fireworks to the vicinity of the Albury or U N M campus, others like in the airport. All provide plenty of room for parking. Others suggest canceling the entire event, maybe using that same afternoon to honor our military vets and first responders with an afternoon about America in Kid Carson Park. Color guards, vets in uniforms, songs of and about America, free speeches about various historical events, special events and games for our kids, along with food booths from local restaurants could add much to the festivities. The annual Taos Fiesta is ten and a half months away. Every year, the town gives the Fiesta organizers a cash donation of $15,000, with the secretive Fiesta council giving virtually no documentation on how this money is spent. Additionally, a great number of town employees provide support services and police protection throughout the weekend, being paid overtime even on Friday afternoon, which is often designated as a town holiday. Incredibly, the town purchased twenty booth spaces last year, giving the Fiesta council another $8,000 while having no intention of using these twenty spaces. The Fiesta's are a town event with very strong religious overtones, beginning with the Friday afternoon mass at the Guadalupe Church, immediately followed by a procession from the church to the plaza. The religious themes continue on Saturday and Sunday, especially with lengthy religious prayers and songs early in each of those days. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution, to what is commonly called the Establishment Clause, clearly prohibits government support of religion. Thomas Jefferson and James Madison, framers of the Constitution and the First Ten Amendments of the Constitution, commonly called the Bill of Rights, were sensitive and fearful of state support of religion. And for that matter, religions suppressed by the state. And for that matter, religions suppressed by the state. Bottom line, the Taos Fiesta is, to a great extent, a religious celebration. But even if religion were a minor factor, government support would still be illegal. Two in this council have chosen to dishonor their oath to honor the United States Constitution. But Dan, Julian, Fritz, along with Jacob and Rich, Rick, I'm sorry, have taken this same oath within the last month. I ask you to honor this commitment, to honor the United States Constitution. Finally, it seems our previous mayor has decided not to ask the council for donations of cash, security, and facilities for his Mother's Day weekend concert. Hopefully, council support of this private event has ended forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Like this? Not, thank everybody who's, sorry.
Do you want me to go out there?
No, no, no. Sorry.
This is just a continuation of the citizens' forum. I've had, and forgive me if I'm off-base, you'll straighten me up, but I've had a number of parents who have had science fair students at the middle school, our high school, at the charter school, who have done a fabulous job and worked very, very hard as, and I'm not going to top their horn, I'm going to stop right there. I'm going to ask the mayor and the manager if we can somehow reach out to the principals of those respective schools. And just as we have honored our hockey champions, and I bet you just quite a few of them are science fair winners as well, if they could come back and if we could acknowledge their hard work, I'd be grateful. I don't see any of those parents here tonight. They knew the hockey team was going to be here, so they're not dumb. So that's a request from some citizens. And then, second request. I was over at the county today talking with Eduardo Martinez. He's the head of the Solid Waste Department for our county. And he was talking about Earth Day. And I asked Mr. Martinez if he could come tonight to request of the council that we consider collaborating with the county to celebrate Earth Day. And then, interestingly enough, I got an email from David Cortez, who is praising me of the, it's called the Global Climate Convergence. And I apologize, I just don't know much about it, I'm just hearing about this. And that celebration actually starts on April 22nd and concludes, I believe, on Earth Day, May 1st. And I'm wondering, what Mr. Martinez was suggesting was that he's had so many people who've volunteered to play music, have a cookout, to work, to clean up our streets, which kind of alludes to an issue that Mr. Northrup brought to our attention two weeks ago about how the main paseo is looking pretty trashy and, you know, can we spruce it up, please, and get some volunteer efforts? This might all collaborate. And Mr. Northrup, I'm going to invite you to maybe talk to me or Mr. Bellis about that. But bottom line is, Mr. Martinez at Solid Waste in the county sees a wonderful opportunity for our town to collaborate with the county and pull together some functions between April 22nd and 1st, and specifically on Earth Day, to have some fun, have a cookout, get a band, and clean up our little town. So that's not nearly as eloquent as Mr. Martinez would have been, but that was his request, and I don't see him out there. So perhaps, depending on your and the council's approval, Mr. Mayor, along with the gazillion other things that Mr. Bellis has to do, perhaps that's one thing that we could collaborate on and exhibit to our community, this new collaborative effort that we are embarking on with our council. We face tremendous problems, and this is a really heartfelt solution brought to us by a county department head who has a lot of heart, and he's, Mr. Martinez, Eduardo is totally psyched about this. So that's my request and my end of public commentary.
Thank you. And thank you, Fritz. And Mr. Bellis and I, you know, he's very active also in the possibility of starting some kind of recycling program. So we've been talking with him lately, Fritz, but, Mr. Bellis?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman. I've already responded to David Cortez, the county sponsor, who reached us to look at a date. The town is sponsoring April 24th, Thursday, at 6:00 PM at the Old County Courthouse. We will be heading a roundtable and panel discussion on recycling efforts, renewable energy, in conjunction with Mr. Martinez and the county, also on community cleanups and water issues. It's very short notice to pull all of that together, but we have committed to provide whatever we can to be the sponsor for that date. And any of the elected officials are invited to be part of that community dialogue as well. So that will be 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Old County Courthouse on Thursday, April 24th. It may grow from that effort. I'd also like to address, while I'm sure my town attorney would tell me I can't say anything specific in regards to the spring ditch, I would like the people to know that shortly after this administration took office, we requested of the planning department a complete analysis of land use and development codes as they regard water rights, the rights and protections of ditches and insequias, and to analyze whether we could improve those. And at this point, we were looking at the recommendations brought in by amigos bravos based on the EPA guidelines for setbacks, effluents that would contaminate waterways. And there's tons of reasons for doing that, not just to protect the ancient rights of those waterways, but because as those waterways dry up, they become fuel sources in urban neighborhoods to cause fire. And we are waiting at this point, and in fact, coordinating with the county so that it doesn't do any good if we have two sets of regulations and the ditch stops and nobody's protecting it on the other side. So we are working together with them, and hopefully by Friday, we'll have a uniformed set of regulations to protect, including wetlands and recharge areas, and have those back as a recommendation for amendment, probably early next month to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. Mr. Councilman?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Fritz, to take along your lines of recognizing the science fair students in the area, I think those are excellent because I think oftentimes this community rallies around the athletics. And while I believe it's a great outlet for our kids to engage in things other than delinquency, I also feel that there is a huge, huge area that we lack on, which is the student part of that athlete component. So I would ask that we take it a step further. We could also look not only at science fair, but some of the, I mean, the high school along with U N M Taos is starting to engage in a deeper concern with the STEM programs. Having two national labs within our state that employ less than 10% of our state's population is a huge concern, especially being less than 60 miles away from the closest one to us. So I think a lot of that comes with through the recognition of our students and showing them alongside the athletes that we do care. Also, along the lines of the Earth Day, Fritz, I think there's also a national blackout holiday, which would mean public offices, public buildings go dark for, I can't remember if it's an hour or the afternoon. But I would ask that the city also, and the county, look into that as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And just on those lines, Councilor, one of the students here at Taos High School received one of the most prestigious scholarships that's awarded through the lab just recently. And these were of students all over the state. So, I mean, it's great to see where are the students and engineers getting recognized. We'll go on to, if there's nothing else from the board, we'll go ahead and go on to then magistrate and staff presentation from Elizabeth Palacios. It's Elizabeth, and she's here. She's with the Community Foundation, and she'll give us a little presentation on Give Grande New Mexico, a statewide day of giving sponsored by the community foundation in New Mexico. Good evening.
Good evening. I have some color for you. We've been divided in black and white. I thought I could use color.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Critten Palacios. I'm the director of Taos Community Foundation. Welcome to all of you in your new and very challenging and very detailed, diverse decision-making leadership roles. Wish you luck in the position, and I know each one of you has the heart and love mine to take on the challenges ahead of you. What I have today that I'm talking to you about is something called Give Grande New Mexico. Give Grande New Mexico is a partnership with five community foundations in the state of New Mexico, also partnering across the state, excuse me, across the nation, on a giving day, one day, May 6, 2014, where everybody in the nation will go to their computers and make a gift, or a number of gifts, to the organizations and causes that they care about. What I'm asking you today about is for you to consider May 6, Give Grande New Mexico Day. And that also that you consider May 6 a day where you can give each one of the town employees a little bit of time off, go to their computers, and be able to make a contribution to a cause in the community that they care about, be it science fair, youth programs, behavioral health, water, many of the topics that we've heard today. Many of those are the different kinds of things that are addressed in our community through the work of our nonprofits. It's important to support that sector of work in community, much like we support our government and our business sector. Some of you may not know too much about Taos Community Foundation, but as an organization in our community, we are a grant-making organization that is specifically in place to support the nonprofits. Since inception, 14 years ago, we've awarded $6 million in grants towards education, environment, health and human services, and leadership in our community. We believe that Give Grande is the first, Give Grande New Mexico is the first in many annual events that we will have towards in the future. We believe that by coming together as a community, we can make a difference. And so I graciously again ask that you consider Give Grande New Mexico Day, May 6, 2014, and that you give some time off for the county employees to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Bellis?
Mr. Mayor, it's often said that Taos has more nonprofits per capita than anywhere in the country. I presume that's true by the amount of requests we get for funding and support every year. But I think that if that is true, in no small part is that due to the work of your foundation, yourself and the staff. It was one of the first organizations I came in contact with when I moved here. I was incredibly impressed that for a community this size to have a resource that nonprofits could go to for advice, that you were tackling huge issues in education, socioeconomic reform in the community, mobilized tremendous resources. And just my personal thanks in that of the county and when I worked at the county for all the work you've done for everyone here.
Thank you very much. Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you. Bellis, if you can look into that and see that you could.
We will prepare an appropriate proclamation, and perhaps we can combine the May 6 and the environmental efforts into creating some sort of volunteer effort for town, town employees.
Thank you. So if we go on to B, Taos Aviation Services lease extension, just want to look at John, Jacob, and whoever else you brought with you, John? And consideration possible approval to extend a lease with Taos Aviation Services as provided in original lease agreement contract TT 87065 to provide fixed base operator services at Taos Regional Airport, including aircraft fueling, aircraft storage, and other matters typical of a fixed base operator for a period of four years.
Mayor and council members, town manager, would bring this before you today. I've been working on this lease extension now since March of last year, so a little bit over a year that we've been working on this to get this together. Their, Taos Aviation's original lease called for 16 years and then a four-year extension if the town and Taos Aviation agreed to that. You have, you have the original lease as part of your packet, I believe, and also the lease extension. The Airport Advisory Board, last week, passed a resolution unanimously supporting this lease extension with Taos Aviation Services. And also, I've just got to tell you, these guys provide an excellent service to their customers, and I have, I have no problems with the work that they do. I stand for any questions.
Go to council, Mr. Carruth.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you know, I also stand for questions. I obviously missed my opportunity to make a John Jacob Jingleheimer Schmidt joke. No, I didn't. As John mentioned, in your packet are copy of the old lease, the closed lease, the appraisal report, and the resolution passed by the Airport Advisory Board. You know, this is something that came up pretty quickly in my work for the town and to this council, but it's clearly been discussed for several months now between my predecessor and Scott Sanger, the attorney for Taos Aviation Services. And I'll also note that here to answer any questions is the representative of Taos Aviation Services, Tim Wondage. This, we're characterizing this as an extension of the 16-year lease that was in place and that expires. It's justifiable as an extension of that lease, particularly because the services that are provided or the use of the facility is a use that can be deemed to be common in the industry for fixed base operators and the services provided. With that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I certainly stand for any questions you have.
Councilor?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, may I? Eighty-seven stands for what? A lease. Is that the year?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Felata, for some reason, that is the first part of the contract number that was assigned to the 1998 lease. And the only, I've asked that question, and I don't have a good answer for it, but it appears as though the way that leases and contracts generally speaking are indexed in the town records is by reference to preceding agreements. Now, John and I conducted a meticulous and with Renee's help, thorough search for that contract number in town records, and all we came up with was this 1998 contract. So I really don't know how it relates back to eighty-seven, if at all.
Normally, where we do contracts, eighty-seven would be the first year, and then the contract would be sixty-five, would be the 65th contract issued that year. Then the reason I'm asking that question, because with ninety-eight, there's no issue as far as the extension of the lease, because it's just 16 years. If we go back to eighty-seven, though, it would be over the 25 years, and we'd need to issue a new lease rather than an extension. So that was the reason I'm asking the question, but if you can't find a previous lease... So that was the reason I'm asking the question, but if you can't find a previous lease... Tim, do you remember a previous lease to ninety-eight? Excuse me, I remember something that we, we did in ninety-eight, or we created a new lease in ninety-eight.
Councilor Peralta, we created a new lease.
Not like the one...
At that time. And we created a new lease at that time.
I think there was...
Eric Taos had a previous lease, and we bought out, you issued, actually, when you were the mayor, you issued this lease, and we bought out Eric Taos's lease. We bought out their contract after you issued us a new lease.
So we should have changed the number on it.
And so what should have happened is the number should have changed on it. For some reason, I think the numbers probably got transgressed or passed around.
If I could, just for clarification, if it's possible, we had the ninety-eight minutes when we approved the, this lease, and use that as origination date, so we don't have any issues. You know, I'm totally supportive of this extension, I just want to make sure that we're getting it right, because that eighty-seven just kind of throws a little bit of a kink in the works.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Peralta, we did, we went back and we reviewed the minutes of ninety-eight, and there was no indication in our review of those minutes that this, that it was treated as a continuation of a preceding lease at that point. I honestly can't explain the eighty-seven, but there's just simply nothing in the available records that indicates that it, that the ninety-eight lease relates to anything from nineteen eighty-seven except for that number.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just asking for an approval of this extension. It'd be reflected in the minutes.
I'm just, just going to ask a couple of questions, John. You know, I know that, you know, there's a master plan that's being created, or a master plan that's going to move forward out there, and, you know, I know there's a number of people that have asked about different possibilities out there, and again, you know, as a recommendation that I understand from the board, the local board, to wait, and a lot of this still, the master plan has been set in place or is in place before we move, is that, is that what we're looking at?
Yes, that's, that's correct. We believe that the best way to develop the airport in an orderly and, in the best way would be to have a master plan in place before we start building hangars. It would be best for the airport engineers to analyze the best places for hangars, going by FAA rules, what the setbacks, what the clearances need to be between hangars. There's, there's a lot of factors there. This lease is not affected by the master plan, I don't believe, in any way. They are already providing the services, they're not building new hangars. It is an existing, successful business.
And then my other question to John, does this lease, you know, I know that during the construction phase of the airport, there's probably going to be some time in there where we might not have plans to lay flag. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but just during that construction phase, there might be a time where, you know, months for, I don't know that, I'm going to depend on, and Mr. Carruth?
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to ask that question. I was willing to give you some of the bullet points in this lease, and this is as good an opportunity as any. And I should go back by suggesting, by mentioning to the council that as part of the initial negotiations here, the operator was very interested in the longer-term lease, and I think through several conversations, largely along the lines of what you just touched on, the major changes that may be happening with the airport, the need to develop the master plan, it was ultimately agreed and conceded that it would be important to limit the length of that lease for the time being while those plans are worked up. At the same time, the operator needs to be able to plan for some period of time for operations, and so for a couple of reasons, including that the lease provided for a four-year extension, and because of those, I've just outwound, a four-year term seems appropriate. Now, because there's a significant possibility that there will be some downtime at the airport due to this construction, we did insert a provision that basically extends the term of this extension by any number of days that the operator is not able to conduct its business due to the closure of the airport. And that's set forth in pretty straightforward terms, basically day for day. Any day of closure means an extra day at the end of that closure to operate, so for a total of four years. And I hope, Mr. Mayor, that answered that question. In most other respects, the lease follows the form of the, of its predecessor lease with some modern additions in the form of environmental insurance requirements. There is a reference to the two existing subleases on the property, which are a car rental sublease and a helicopter emergency health helicopter service. And I should mention along those lines that there's one minor change that Scott Sanger picked up that's not in the lease in your packet, and it's so minor that I don't want to draw too much attention to it, but on page nine of the lease that's in the packet, there is a reference to one sublease, which is the car rental sublease, but not to the helicopter sublease. So I've added that in the version if there should be a vote on this matter. That's one change to the version that's in your packet that I'd like to make.
Councilor Peralta.
That is the emergency helicopter.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Peralta, yes.
Councilor Carruth.
Thank you, Jacob. And John, I want to thank you for taking me and instructing me about all of the airport functions. And Tim, it was great to meet with you, and Scott, it was nice to see you over there. Here it is in a nutshell for me. We just dropped two-thirds of a million bucks on the airport. We have got to make this thing work. We absolutely have to make this thing work. And so I can't stress enough how important that master plan is. It will be our guide, it will become the economic driver, and if, if, what I'm fearful of happens, which is that it'll become a boondoggle, the master plan may help to prevent that kind of tragedy. So I want to reiterate again the need for that master plan, and we must allow planning and zoning to move forward forthrightly as regards that. Secondly, it has come to my attention that when you offer the fabulous services that you do with a long-term lease, as you've had, Tim, that we can run the risk of excluding other proprietors, other providers, and I would ask that the master plan carefully consider that. Free enterprise, and I think all of us up here are small business people, is essential. But without a master plan, it can run amok. So one of the things I learned was that a through-the-fence approach with an adjoining landowner could conceivably threaten our FAA funding. So we can't do it. But we do need to keep our ears and eyes open for those who have ideas that are sound, that are going to make the town Taos some money, that are going to make what I fear is a boondoggle, a financial success. Now, when I say boondoggle, I am not talking about the staff out there, I'm not talking about TAS, I'm not talking about our fabulous department head, John. I'm just talking about numbers. Number of flights coming in, number of flights going out, services offered, what can we sell, how can we make this thing pay for itself? And, more importantly, how can we augment our revenues so that it can help to pay for some of the repairs that we need to have done in our town? I've heard of a number of fabulous ideas, a regional economic zone, I think collaborating with the county is essential. I noticed a sign out there that said Taos municipal airport, and then 50 years later, Taos regional airport. So there is still that confusion. We must collaborate with our county regarding this. We must include some of our other partners, Taos Ski Bell, Angel Fire, Red River, Costilla, Questa, I bet you some of those miners got points. So what I'm saying is simply this, that a master plan should go a long way in helping to assure the viability of the airport, that a properly constructed master plan will allow for free enterprise, common sense free enterprise. Now, y'all are getting to know me pretty good, I'm pretty blunt. Here's what I see, a lot of hawks out there flying around the airport looking for the rabbit. The airport's the rabbit. Well, as a town council, I want to guard against that, but I don't want to kill the hawks in the meat hole. So there has to be a truly collaborative effort here where everybody comes out on top. Tim, this is a hypothetical, but here it is. In the event that we have the beginning documents of a master plan, and an entrepreneur comes to us with an idea that might make, might make business sense to the town, would you be willing to consider moving your long-term partner from where it is to the other end to allow connection?
Certainly. I've always worked very closely with the town, and the airport is a very important facility, and it's very much understood. The gentleman who spoke earlier doesn't understand the whole ramification of the airport. Ten years, more than 10 years ago, the state aviation did a study that the airport has, in its current status, 10 years ago, had a $6 million economic impact on this community per year. Because we have the facility that I built, thanks to council, Councilor Peralta, and Gus Cordova, we have a lifeflight operation that responds to our hospital in eight minutes. That's huge for this community. You've flown on it, if I remember right. FAA mandate does not allow exclusivity on federally funded airports. That's FAA mandate, okay? And I'll give an example, if you have a car rental company that's out there, and another car rental company wants to come in, if there is room somewhere on the airport, the town has to let the other car rental company come in. Okay? So from that standpoint of entrepreneurial approaches, the town is protected by FAA mandate. While the town is also under constraints to prove a financially viable operation, so I'm acutely aware of the fact that too many hawks flying in the zone threaten that viability. And hence, again, Mr. Thompson, the need for that master plan and the need for Martha Perkins, our P&amp;Z director, to really be given some, some help, maybe not help, but maybe not guidance is the right word, but support, there's the word, support, for the work that she has to do. And I feel that master plan will guide us. But this thing has got to work. It has got to work, and as a counselor, I fully trust Mr. Thompson. Tim, I think you run a great operation. I love Scott, we go back a long way. I know Jeff, just met him last week, so we have the potential, but I, I do not want to see us give away all of our chips. So I'll talk about hangars for a second, at the risk of worrying everybody. That's where the town has to make some money, hangars. So how dumb will we be, right, to be blunt? If we allow hangars to be built adjoining while our hangars at the airport lie empty, it's an issue. We've got to work it out. So we have, there's some potential here for entrepreneurs, and we need those entrepreneurs, but there's an intense need for honest, transparent collaboration. And I'm not saying that anybody has not been. I'm just saying as a new counselor, that's what I'm looking for. Do we have an enterprise that Mr. Thompson can look back in five years and say, we're not only paying for it, we're making some major bucks to the town to help, to help our citizens? If we can't take that back to our citizen, we have done them the service. So I think, I feel like after my meeting with Mr. Brown, after my meetings with you, briefly with Scott, with staff here, especially Mr. Thompson, I feel very confident that we have the right leadership and the right players. That master plan is key, and we've got to make this deal work. We just, we were in office for five days, and we had to drop two-thirds of a million bucks on a project that I know very little about. So notwithstanding all the hard work, 40 years, 20 years, talking to people and so on, but you know what? I have grave concerns. So I want to have, you know, bluntly, I want you to be able to survive, I want Mr. Brown to survive, but I need for our citizens to make some money on this deal, or we're done. I think that the FAA wants to see the town maximize its yield from its lands, its town-owned lands that are adjacent to the airport, before they encourage or allow outside private land operations to happen.
And that master plan, excuse me for interrupting, Tim, hopefully that brings us into another area. Our attorney has been working on, and that's the landlord situation out there, and there's so many properties out there that are. So the two, it's quite a mosaic.
It is.
Good luck, Jacob. Thank you, Tim, I really appreciate it, and I'm very grateful for you allowing me the opportunity to just speak so bluntly and forthrightly. And Jeff, thank you, and Mr. Thompson, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, John, Tim, thank you, Scott. It is evil. I guess my biggest concerns with the airport along the lines of Councilor Hanz is the same thing, is viability, and it's what, when elected to this office, when the agreements are signed with Taos local, ensures the viability, not just in the near future, but in the distant future, for us to be able to continue to grow as a community, to be able to provide air service to locals alongside those that bring their own planes in and out of this airport. So my concern is, and the one concern that I have, and I think Mayor Broni and I have talked about this pretty significantly over the course of the last month, was with regards to the five cents the town makes on, on fuel purchases, and I look back at it and say, five cents is not a whopping amount of money for the, for the town to yield based on what this expansion will, will cost us and the taxpayers. So the one thing I guess I look for, even with regards to the FBO and, and field service operations out there, is to how do we generate the viability of that, and is there room, even within the constraints of the town Taos, to be able to undertake this endeavor under our own wing, much like some of the municipal airports that operate outside of , of Taos. So I guess what I'm looking for with regards to the terms of the contract, council, is that we still leave the option open that once the airport is open, it's viable, and should the town see fit to, to either bring the FBO services under the wing with the town Taos itself to help offset costs, that that option is there as well, too. So I yield to you, John, whether or not airport staff has looked at something like that, if yours looked at something like that, I guess I'm just looking... that, if yours looked at something like that, I guess I'm just looking for options as well.
We have, we have been considering that, we've looked at that, even, even for this lease extension, we looked at that. Is, is the town in a position right now to take over services like that? And honestly, we're looking at between four and $600,000 if the town were to take over that role right now. Not to mention hiring additional staff to take care of the fueling services, the training, the liability that the town would have. It would be a tremendous undertaking, and in my opinion, not possible in, in a month or two to make that transition.
And John, real quick, Mr. Mayor, I guess what I'm looking for is along the terms of the three Ps, the public-private partnership, and whether or not that's a viability, not to single out anybody, but at the same point, the ability to compete for the services. I'm sure there's a level of service you guys provide, having skin in the game, being out there as long as you had, that maybe somebody else coming in to offer services wouldn't have. So for me, it's about creating those partnerships within the existing entities that already exist out there, to where it's a win-win, not only for the entity, but for the town's house as well. So, I mean, I guess that's what I'm looking for, not in, in terms of just an all outright takeover, I know feasibility on that. I mean, we'd have to be pretty up and successful, probably, but not even a ten-year solution at this point, but creating that public-private partnership at the same point. So if that's something we could maybe entertain and look at?
Yes, a couple of points, if I can make them, please. First of all, state statute is 20 years. So by giving us the four years, we've reached the maximum of the state statute. Then, we're going to have to go out for RFP, request for proposals. At that time, we relook at the fluid, all, everything, including the fluid fees. Five cents is actually fairly typical. I researched that when I was the airport manager. And in terms of the town running the FBO in the future, I would defer to Mr. Caldwell. Risk management, your insurance, you have Exco Insurance Company, well, that covers the town, will not cover FBO operations run by town employees. And I think Mr. Caldwell can confirm that for you. So you have to understand that there are very important insurance things that have to happen for you to do that. And my insurance bill is roughly $36,000 a year.
Thank you. John?
Many council members, right now what the plan is, is that in two years, two years into this four-year lease extension, we start looking at what we're going to have to do at the four-year point. If it's going out to RFP, or if it's working toward the town stepping into that role, I will, I will be working with the airport advisory board very closely on this. And I think at the two-year point, that's, that's where we start working toward what we plan on doing at the four-year point.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick, John, with regards to that and the master plan, somewhere within that master plan, I mean, I guess one area of operation to see a possibility is creating an airport taxing district, maybe its own governing board and body, because it will be a joint collaboration between the town and the county. So just something that oversees all the aspects alongside of the land use development out there. Ultimately, I mean, I want to protect the viability as much as you all do, so I think maybe in the future, that may be a possibility as well, too, and almost removing the political crossfire on that.
Anything else from council? What's a wishes of order?
Move for approval.
Motion and a second?
Please, Mayor.
With, with, I was going to, councilor, with the amendment to the contract?
Yes.
Okay. One second. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Cuncho?
Yes, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes. I'm going to abstain on this. I'm still just not one hundred proof. Oh, you're notorious. Oh, I do. Oh. No. All right, so we go on to item C. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for all the time and the effort you guys have put out there, and thank you for the tour that I received, and it was, it was an eye-opener. I didn't realize we owned so much land in that area, and the fine job you guys have done out there, and their fine job, too. Thank you, appreciate it. So we go on to item C, Resolution 1419, authorizing signature authority for designated bank accounts, consideration possible approval of Resolution 1419, authorizing signature authority for designated bank accounts of townhouse. Marietta, thank you, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, town manager, and youth council member. The resolution you have is just changing two names, and that is Mayor Tim Peralta and Manager Rick Dallas, including yourself and myself, as signature on, on all the bank accounts. Does that have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, please, can you just keep me on file? So then if you turn on to fill out that paperwork again?
No.
No.
I have to fill it all over again.
Yes, then...
The bank requires...
It's not, the bank, the bank requires no matter what. Some are a little bit different, but no, sorry, I wish we could, but we can't.
Mr. Mayor, I have asked, did the mayor propose to bury him like everybody else?
So you don't have to slide him?
I have a recommendation, just keep the mayor pro temp wherever. It's just, whatever it is, we'll have to change it again if it changes the mayor pro temp, but for now, we have a set good for hopefully a good amount of time.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, councilman Peralta, under your mayorship, you had mentioned you all were signers of home property. How did that work?
Well, just depending upon who was available at the time you needed the signature. Ninety-nine percent of the time, I sign everything, and that's tip of the mirror, but when you're out of town and you need something signed, then it's whoever's available, because sometimes the mayor pro temp himself is not available. You know, we can both be on the same page.
And actually, in the past, the mayor pro temp, each one of the council members took that duty like every quarter, but the mayor pro temp was not always usually the second signature on the account, so that one, it was just another council member that just stayed the whole time, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to change it, but that was a little different, so.
Cool, whatever, just, the paperwork's crazy.
Yeah.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor. You have a motion to approve, you have a second?
No, second, no.
Any further discussion? Staff, it seems good? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuncho? Councilmember Brown?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Marietta.
Thank you.
You can go get supper now. So we go on to Resolution 1420, hiring of immediate family member of town employee E. Consideration and possible approval of Resolution 1420 to hire Justin J. Sandoval as a lifeguard one on a temporary basis within the pool department, Youth and Family Division Center, and Mrs. Sandoval as the granddaughter of current employee Henry Sandoval, who is a lead transit operator in the pool transportation department. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, members of the council and Mr. Town Manager. This is presented before you. Ms. Sandoval has been a temporary lifeguard before she has been an employee of the town, so just rehiring her again to be another temporary lifeguard. Can I stand for any questions or comments?
And Mrs., let me just make sure, there's no direct supervision?
No direct supervision at all.
Unless he takes a blessing.
Right. Get it out.
This is for the summer season?
Yes.
Okay, how many hires are you doing for the summer and fall season?
Right now, we're doing five temporary hires and one part-time lifeguard hire. And we'll be interviewing for the part-time position actually tomorrow.
And this is from what date to what date?
This goes, I believe, till the end of August.
Thank you. Go for approval, Mr. Mayor. We have a motion to approve, you have a second. Any further discussion? Just one question, is we're going to have all our lifeguards in place for the Easter eggs hunt? I know we're having a spectacular there, having Easter egg hunt in the water.
We, we, we have to go.
We have to go.
And I think that's the way they wanted to start interviewing right away, to get most of the staff on board that they needed to.
Oh, great. Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we go to item E, Memorandum of Understanding, TT 14192, with Taos Municipal Schools, consideration possible, possible approval of Memorandum of Understanding, TT 14192, between the townhouse and the town municipal schools, regarding improvement of Town Hall Drive, and I believe we all have Rick French and Mr. Patterson?
I believe, Mr. Mayor, that Mr. Patterson will be representing the schools, and Mr. Caldwell will prepare the MOU.
Mayor, if I may, I have some images of the actual project.
Please.
I brought them via PDF, but I didn't see the computer up and running tonight, so I just made some copies for us to refer to during our conversations.
Doug, if we could, I think you can get us up and running real quick, just for now to review that. Start talking, and I'll get it on.
Okay.
Renee, and when we have a, Renee, when we have a handout, you always want a copy for your records also, is that correct?
Mayor, council members, my name is Doug Patterson, I'm an architect, a living design group architect, the architecture firm here in town, and I'm here on behalf of Taos Municipal Schools, to see through a project that we've been working together for a long time. You have two PDFs in front of you. One is a black and white drawing, which is a, which is a scope of work document for Town Hall Drive and the extension of Montzinaras through the Taos Municipal School property. The second PDF that you have is a colored photo, and that colored photo is a rendering of the park facility that will be built around the Taos Schools administration building, which is in the old Inos Garcia, or the old Taos Elementary, Elementary School. And what we have in front of us is a memorandum of understanding that's been prepared by Mr. Caldwell, and this outlines an agreement between Taos Municipal Schools and the town of Taos to construct the improvements along Town Hall Drive and Montzinaras. I believe the former council members have seen this once before, I think we reviewed this last fall, and for Commissioner, Councilmember Han and Mayor Broni and Councilmember Cantu, I think this is new, so if you'd like to, if you'd like me to go in any more detail in regards to either one of those projects, I'd be happy to.
One second. Councilor Peralta? Look at your black and white.
Yes, sir.
On Town Hall Drive. The construction of that doesn't go all the way to Valverde, right?
Mayor, Mayor Broni and Councilmember Peralta, the extents of the construction along Town Hall Drive are from Placitas all the way to Valverde.
So it does complete that?
Yes, sir.
Ground, just the whole that we have there?
And the biggest thing that it does is it, it makes it one through street, and it gets rid of the ninety-degree turn that we have right now, right before the library entry, so right now, there's a ninety-degree turn, there's a juts north, and then goes through to Valverde. So this plan straightens out and aligns Town Hall Drive to be one continuous street from Placitas to Valverde.
In that straightening out, does... How does this relate to the boundary lines of the town property and the school property?
I may have to, I think I could refer to an image on the PDF that has a boundary line on there. I'm not sure, Mr. Caldwell, the packet that made it into the council members' packet, does that have the exhibits to the memorandum?
Yeah, I feel like it does. So unfortunately, the...
Let me go, Mr. Peralta, I'm not sure if you can find that in your council member packet, but there's several exhibits, and one of those is a survey, and that survey gives the best description of the extensive Town Hall Drive that are around Taos Municipal Schools property.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Doug, I'll pull up the agenda on the screen.
I'm looking at it here, but all I see is a topographical line. It doesn't give me clear boundaries.
Yeah, it's exactly the next exhibit, but I agree that it's not a great exhibit.
Mayor, Mayor, may I approach and look at, let's see, I'm not sure if I can see the exhibits that are in the Town Hall. So there's a, I'm looking at sheet C 2.0 from a data engineer, and there's a dash line that goes across the top of that page, and that dash line is the boundary line of the Taos Municipal Schools, so you can see that the portion of Town Hall Drive from Placitas all the way up to the crosswalk is wholly owned land owned by the Taos Municipal Schools.
So does the MOU relate to that?
You, Broni, Councilman Peralta, I believe it does, and I believe, right now, from all of our research, we haven't been able to find any formal easement that's been granted from Taos Municipal Schools to the town of Taos, and in this memorandum of understanding, that is a condition that we would grant a permanent easement for ingress and egress to the town of Taos over the portion of Town Hall Drive that's on school land.
Paragraph four.
And Mr. Mayor, so there's, there's a couple places that issues double, in the warehouse division and the recitals.
Recitals don't bind.
I'm sorry?
Recitals don't bind.
No, the very first recital sets forth that the portion of the Town Hall Drive lies on property owned by the schools, and in the scope section, which is paragraph one of the agreement section, and paragraph F, provides that on recent construction that the permanent easement will be provided at the Town Hall Drive.
Now, has this been approved by the municipal school board?
Mayor Brony, Councilman Peralta, this memorandum of understanding has gone before the Taos Municipal School Board. And they have, they have approved this memorandum of understanding to be taken to the town council for their, for their review and amendment if necessary. So I would consider this still in draft form. If, if the town council approves this tonight, I would take this, this form back to the Taos Municipal Schools and ask them to approve it one final time, and then I would bring it back to town council one final time. So this is the first time that the town council has seen this formal memorandum of understanding. I think simply what we're asking for you tonight is to review this memorandum of understanding and make any required changes if there are any. And give us permission to consider this a final to take back to Taos Municipal Schools. They have seen this draft and they agree with all of its terms. Yes, sir. And pending your approval.
Councilor Peralta? Can we construct the easement agreement?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Peralta, no.
Yeah.
This also happened pretty fast. This MOU was generated as a result of a meeting that transpired last week between Doug, the mayor, the town manager, and our public works director, who are in here. And there's a few provisions in the MOU that I'm comfortable proceeding on the basis of, including the the, this ultimate agreement to work together collaboratively in the project management is contingent upon ultimate funding approval of the construction documents once the bid is awarded, or once the RFP is issued and the bid is brought to you for, for an award. There isn't sufficient detail at this point, in my opinion, to enter into easement agreements. And that's something that would have to be worked out as a result of this kind of collaborative MOU process.
Am I correct in saying, we are that, that we are giving the authority for the municipal school district and their architect engineers and so forth to put together the bid package and bid this out? So I guess in that relation, in that regard, are you comfortable with the splitting of the project as far as the cost is concerned between the town and the school district?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Peralta, you know, I'm comfortable with the methodology that was utilized to come to that proportionate share. My understanding, and I hope either Doug or Rick will correct me if I'm wrong, was that... And just to step back a little bit, my understanding is that both the school and the town currently have plans to make these improvements. That in fact, each entity has conducted its own design work and cost estimation for purposes of each, its respective portion of this set of improvements. And that the intent is essentially to try to align the timing and the management of those two sets of improvements as one project, as one contract. With that as the basis for why this MOU is being proposed, I'm comfortable asserting that in each respective party's workup of design estimates, those ultimate design estimates were what were used to allocate that percentage share. Really, Councilor Peralta, I think the issue is whether the governing body is comfortable with that allocation as set forth on that basis. Again, the big get-out clause is that...
I guess, I guess my problem is that I haven't seen the allocations.
Um...
In other words, I know the project and I know the boundaries of the project, but I don't know if, if this project is delineated as far as the cost allocation between the town and the school district based on square footage? Is it based upon a certain parameter of property that's going to be improved? I don't know. That's what I'm trying to say. I know the project and I like the project. I would like to see it done. I'm just trying to figure out what the council is approving as far as the project. Okay. In other words, and I understand that everybody's worked together on this thing and it's, and it's put together, but I don't know what it is that we are proposing to bind ourselves to. I guess is the problem on having, I'm trying to get that understanding from the MOU. Because as I read it, the way it's set up here is that the project manager for the schools will take over this project and seek it out for bids and you'll also receive the construction and all that. That's fine with me. I just need to know that if this project is sixty percent the schools and twenty, forty percent the town, or whatever it is, that we delineate it very specifically based upon something that I haven't seen.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Peralta, I think that's a very valid question. Just to reiterate and add a little more detail to what I said previously, there is a, there was a scope of work identified by the town through its public works department to make improvements to Town Hall Drive. That scope of work was in turn encapsulated into an RFP for the design work, which in turn created plans and a cost estimate. That cost estimate when compared to all of the same things that were done by the schools with regard to the improvement project to the Monzanadas Road yielded, yielded also a cost estimate. And when compared and lumped together, the proportionate cost estimate for the town portion was approximately forty-six percent, whereas the proportionate share for the schools' share was approximately fifty-four percent. Now...
And I understand that, except that I haven't seen, in other words, the roadway is the town's, Monzanadas is the school's, there's parking lots involved, there's a lot of other things involved in this project. And I don't know specifically what it is that weirded me, except that I can see the total project, and that's where I'm asking the question.
And, and Mr. Mayor, Councilor Peralta, what that sounds like to me is that it would be helpful for you to actually see the scope of work and potentially even some depiction of the design.
Mr. Councilman Peralta, if I may. Did the, did the, did the second exhibit, which was the engineer summary of quantities, make it as an attachment to this MOU?
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, Councilors, no, it didn't, and that, that was my call. I was reluctant to publish the actual cost estimate as part of the agenda packet because I was concerned that it might taint the due process. It's kind of out there now.
I think, I think that was a wise choice. Mr. Peralta, if I may.
I agree with you.
Mr. Peralta, if I may. On the, on the drawings that you have, there's Town Hall Drive. And Town Hall Drive is the road that goes across the top of the page. The, the southern curb that, that is the boundary of Town Hall Drive and the Taos Municipal Schools property, that is the dividing line in terms of cost. And the, the town of Taos paid for the drawings prepared by a beta engineering for Town Hall Drive. And Taos Municipal Schools paid a beta engineering for the construction documents created for the Taos Municipal Schools. And there's a summary of quantities, which is the lineal feet of curb and gutter, the lineal feet of, of sidewalk and the square yards of asphalt and the cubic yards of pit run and base course that are required for each one of those individual projects. And that summary of quantities is the basis for the division of cost. That is a very detailed document, and that was provided to Mr. Bellis and the town of Taos. That document was created by a beta engineering. They came up with that division of cost and Mr. Espinoza, on the part of the town, thought that that was fair. And Dr. Westman, on the part of schools, thought that that was fair.
And that's fine, except that we should see it.
I agree.
And that's the problem I'm having, is that our packets are not complete. We're not getting the documentation by which we're trying to make a decision here tonight, or any other time, that, that gives us the backup information that, that we need to have in order to make an educated decision on the subject. And that's why I'm asking the question, because it's not here, so I don't know what I'm at, I'm doing. I'm sure you're giving me a red line to show it to me now. Why can't I have this written?
Mr. Mayor and Councilors, so I think what we're trying to figure out how to do is, I think there's some urgency to putting this in place in order, in order to put it up to bid at one package. Certainly open suggestions. I think that what is represented by the MOU is a statement that those design estimates were agreed to by the respective parties. And I certainly see your point. I continue to struggle with...
But here's the point. We are the respective party.
Yeah.
And this council is the ones that need to make this decision. Give us the information.
Well, we have a couple choices here. I mean, I can put it up on your computer in that hour.
I wish you had had it days ago to review. But I'm just, I'm just making a point that it's very important for us to have information before us in order to make decisions. Same thing with Councilmember Han wanting to run the inquiry. His concern is legitimate about the viability of that project. And the same thing, I have a concern about the viability of this project. And all I want is just the information to be able to make an educated decision about. And to save you guys an awful lot of time explaining it.
What's the urgency of this? If you were to table this, to get the documentation to, to talk about this at the next town council meeting?
Mayor Brony, Councilwoman Cantu. The timing of this project is, is predicated on getting it complete by the time school's back in order. So, so school will be back in session about August fifteenth, and school gets out about May fifteenth. So we have a window of time, which is about two and a half months, to complete that construction. I'm not sure, you may have seen the pick-up and drop-off times for Enos Garcia, when we have three to four hundred cars that come through Town Hall Drive and down Monzanars. And right now, they're doing that in a temporary condition that has some safety concerns. So this has been a big issue for the town and the Taos Municipal Schools. And this project has been in planning for about a year to cure those safety concerns. And it's finally coming to the point to go to construction. And it's time to go to construction. So it's the, the timing of this is really predicated by getting this under construction by mid-May. All the pieces are in place. The only piece that's not in place is this memorandum of, of understanding between the schools and the town. I agree completely with Councilman Peralta's request for that information. That information is there. It's been on the table for a long time between the town and the schools. And it was provided to the town. I also agree with Mr. Caldwell's reluctance to put it out there in a public format, because I think it will affect the bidding of that project. Regardless, it's there for you to...
I'm just, I'm not asking for cost estimates. I'm just asking for the information that provides the necessary understanding for the council as to what we're doing, what schools are doing, and how that was all engineered. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. Councilman Peralta, I think we have all that information, and right now, that information is in the form of a cost estimate. So I think with a little bit of work, we'd be happy to maybe pull the cost estimating side off that summary of quantities and bring back to the council a document that shows the division of that scope of work and the quantities for that scope of work.
Right. That cost estimate is public information. Once you create it, it's public.
I don't, I don't, I don't see a great deal of harm in putting it out there. The bid, it's still a competitive bid.
I think I'm not asking for it. Like I said, it's, it just is public information. Once you create it and turn it over to the town, it's...
Okay.
So I, I don't want to delay this project. I'm just making a point, so. Mr. Mayor, further question from other councils.
Council?
Well, I guess my thing is that there is, is not also being able to see the cost estimation, which I, I get, keeping it under wraps to not give others an unfair advantage, or to, to put numbers out there prematurely. So I guess what I would ask is, being that this is, you know, timing is of the essence here, can we table and hold a special meaning to, to, on this, just as what I am?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any problem passing it. I just was trying to make a point.
Well, I guess, you know, now that it's, I mean, the point's been made. At the same point, you know, we still have the decision to make. And I'm not sure how the other councils feel with regards to, to feeling comfortable in making that decision without those, those numbers.
I, I mean, I've seen it. This is, this isn't new to me, so.
I can make another suggestion. Really, what I view as the purpose of this MOU is to collaborate in the preparation of construction documents. Collaboration in packaging construction documents in such a way that it can be put out to bid in one package. And for the further purposes, assuming there is an award, it's acceptable to both bodies. And I've made this MOU explicitly contingent on that. I mean, I, I wouldn't be concerned saying absolutely that the town agrees if the bid comes back at some astronomical figure that we have a budget. So we can't do that. So as it stands, we could make, I could suggest an amendment to the MOU as presented that takes out that cost allocation provision and makes it subject to further agreement at the time of contract award. You know, some good faith relation to the actual cost of each relative project. I would allow Doug to proceed while it still remains contingent on your ultimate approval at the time of award. Doug, do you have any, are you heartily with that? So in front of that, there's an option. I mean, I think it's, it's okay as written, because it's still contingent on your further approval at the time of award. But if that would be more comfortable, it would allow me to see now.
Councilor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, just one question to Rick. That is, the engineer's estimate on the portion for the town, is that in our budget?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I think that's...
I know we budgeted for this project, but is it sufficient to cover the estimate?
Yes. And I think that was what led to some of the confusion in Jake and I coming on this project. And we brought in staff that had previously been involved, as well as the school. We asked exactly that same question. We were told that the project had come before this body before and that the ratio involved had been a rationalization for coming up with that figure and being put in the budget and subsequently being approved. So we felt that going beyond that ratio and actually showing the figures did lead to creating problems with the bid. So apparently, we were not correct in our assumption that you had seen the backup data that would have led to that percentage.
What we saw was the proposal. Okay. The idea. The finished project that we're looking at now on improving is what we had in mind. That's the part. So when Mr. Patterson came before us, Paul?
Yes, sir.
And made a proposal, we all looked at it and we thought it was a great proposal. But it didn't delineate specifically what was going to happen after the engineers got through with it. And that should have been brought back to us afterwards. That's, that's what I was asking for.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, and town manager, just to clarify, I've been working with French. We are going to have to bring a budget adjustment back at the next meeting, because he did finally get, I did some kind of cost estimate. So we have an original amount, but we need some more, so that'll be coming back next meeting. The funds that we are using, partial of it is co-op funding, so I'm sure that that's already been discussed with you guys. And whoever's going to be bidding out the project, if it's the schools, to make sure that we're on the same precarious... if it's the schools, to make sure that we're on the same procurement process as the schools because I know it's a little bit different than the municipality and so that we're able to use those funds to, to cover the project based on the requirements that we have on the ground. So, that's just a little bit more information. But we will be bringing something back next, based on the cost estimates that were shared with French.
When did you give the cost estimate?
Uh, I got the bar from French probably not in time for this meeting. I didn't have all the backup ready, so that's probably a week, maybe a week ago.
So, how much were you sure?
Uh, I'm not gonna lie, because I, I think it's one hundred and, no, no, I, I do know. One hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what we're going to be transferring and it's going to be from Salazar Road Project because we could rearrange some funds on that side.
The state is taking care of some of the costs we thought we would have in relation to that intersection. So, that displaced the amount we needed, some of which will be allocated to this project and some of which will go to the other end to provide additional payment to the overall project.
So, the manager was right and we do have it, we just need to bring it back to you for your approval in that case.
This is why we did not communication. Because actually we're asking to approve a project that's in deficit.
Mayor Bruni, Councilman...
Until we make an adjustment, the council has to agree to that adjustment taken from one budget and moving over to another.
Mayor Bruni, Councilman Peralta, I didn't expect to get this passed tonight. This is the first time it's been put in front of you and I expected there to be some questions and some clarifications and possibly some amendments to this agreement. And I knew it would take a couple of times before the town council and the school board. So, this doesn't have to be passed tonight, but I think what we should do is just carry through the conversation and any additional information that you'd like to have or any amendments to this agreement that you'd like to see, possibly in two weeks for the next time we see it again. I'd be happy to, to prepare that and have that in, in time for your next packet.
Mr. Mayor, Patterson, what's your timetable in order to get this project to bid and awarded in order to meet your, your deadline?
We'd like to, Mayor Bruni, Councilman Peralta, we'd like to be able to award this project in the first week of May. So, we're probably looking at May 5th or May 6th and give a notice to proceed with ten days and be under construction by May 15th.
Murray, do that one of your pad because, Mayor?
The procurement would be run by Taus Municipal Schools, so the bid can be, the bid can be in process this entire time. I believe this memorandum of understanding just needs to be in place by the time we're going to sign a construction contract for this project. So, the bidding of the project and everything throughout that process can be taken place while we're discussing the details and finalizing this MOU.
Do you agree with that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Peralta, you know, in theory I do, you know, there's, there's nothing that prevents one from bidding whatever they want along with our sufficient characterizations and the good documents that allow them to amend or get out. So, I think it can be done, I think it must be clear that any procurement process that is applied in the meantime would also have to comply with the town's procurement policy. And, you know, it's not, I would say this is not the favorite way of proceeding, but there's nothing strictly wrong with it.
I, I guess, you know, thirty days from now to award a bid is a pretty tight schedule. And, and so, you know, for us to, we're going to have to move fast and get this stuff done.
And Mr. Mayor, you know, councilmembers, I, I think that you have options and I apologize that you don't have the information that you need for purposes of making a decision tonight. The MOU as drafted has some get outs, including the option to terminate on their notice and the very start contingency based on appropriations. Now, beyond those contingencies that are embedded, I think we can create additional ones if, if you really want to push to approve something tonight. I think Councilor Gonzalez offered a compromise, which is instead of waiting two weeks, maybe we can put something in place such that there's more will on the part of the general council to approve something in a week's time, for example. So, all, all of those are leave her options. I just look to your direction, I think all the out points.
Mr. Mayor, along with that, as Councilmember Peralta pointed out, we have to do a transfer, a funds transfer. So, if we went that route, we'd probably only see both those items on the same agenda to obviously the funds transfer and then the approval.
Just other question, Mayor, not knowing what the bid actually is, not knowing that what we have to transfer because we don't know what the bid is, so is the general policy to put the money in place before we know what the bid is?
Uh, we, we, we try to put the money in place at least so that we have with the cost estimate that they give us and a contingency that we put in, we try to set that before we even go out to bid, that's our standard practice. Because you've got to start somewhere instead of you've got to find it if you know what the cost estimate is going to be. Now, after that, when it comes in higher, then obviously we'll have to go back and look for more money, but we know at least where the cost estimate, we have an idea what to put into the budget and that it's secured there for, for the bid, for the bidding, bidding process.
Mr. Mayor, we shouldn't be making decisions, and I don't even think that we're supposed to by law, make a decision to go out to bid for a project that we have a budget in mind for based upon the estimate of cost of the project. So, we have to do that in order to bid it. So, once we have a necessary amount that we need, then we can transfer that. So, I, I don't have any problem approving the MOU tonight, who waits for it? But we do need to get the other issue taken care of as soon as possible and that would be part of the bid actually being, bid documents being accepted by contract to the schools. So, the next council meeting, Mr. Mayor, would you adjust the budget for this project? Can you bring that back to us, Mayor?
Yes, I was planning on bringing it, I didn't realize this was on the meeting, so I wasn't really ready to bring the other one. And I'll just consult with Doug and attorney to make sure that our grant, that we're going to be supporting this project with is that we bid it outright in the way that they're going to do it. And I'm sure he understands the co-op and the, and the requirements that we have to use, what book from the highway department to cover those spots.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this MOU because of the public safety of our children is at stake if we don't get this project done before the school year starts. A second. We have a motion and a second further discussion.
Go ahead, Councilman. I did have just one issue and you and I kind of briefly touched on this, and I don't know if we can put in any of the stipulations of the contract itself for the MOU, but with regards to the closure of Civic Plaza Drive regarding, you know, during the, the times of our weekend farmer's market that we have, and I know a lot of the vendors rely on wifi from the town's facility to process CBT payments and whatnot via our town parking lot. So, I didn't know if we could, in, in the same token, add to the schools during those Saturdays to either Parkfield as, as an option to host the farmer's market along with the parking that exists on the opposite side through our lady of love with the parking lot. I just, I guess, for me, there needs to be some options there because I know that's going to become an issue if we don't address that in the same time.
And, Councilor, I hear you, and one of the things that I, I mentioned that to Doug and, you know, if it becomes a situation, maybe, and I know I, we asked about Parkfield and they're going to simultaneously be working on Parkfield and they're going to have areas that are going to be blocked off, so, and again, if, if it becomes an issue, maybe we can talk to the county and maybe they can host the farmer's market for this season over there. I think then it would free up that area and maybe we can ask them, you know, about the wifi that might be available, so that's something that we can put on the agenda to talk to the county about if we could, Mr. Bellis?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there was already a plan in place anticipating this project several months ago with the county that agreed and the wifi setup is, is in place and the negotiations have taken place that if, in fact, the project needs to be moved, that it can be done with the county conference for any period of time that's needed. We're also looking at the option, but haven't quite talked to all merchants about the idea of a test of bringing the farmer's market downtown to the plaza and see how that works.
And that was another, that's a whole other issue of two selling days and stuff that they were trusting each other. I would actually look at it in terms of safety as well because the, the amount of parking that currently, currently exists in and around Town Hall, meaning that all of Town Hall is utilized, they're thinking the county is a more viable option anyways.
Councilor Rock?
Let me just switch tracks, Mr. Patterson, thank you so much. Who owns that unpaid portion of the Town Hall Drive going from, let's say, the west end of Town Hall up to Belverde?
The Town House.
Is that a Town House street?
Um, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you if it's a dedicated right of way.
Chief, if you won't leave for a second.
But I, but I do know that that, that land is owned by the Town House.
So, no problem?
Not that I see.
And the neighbors side with all the increased traffic cruising through that intersection? Anybody reach that?
You know, right, right now I think there's a good amount of traffic that does go through there and it goes through there on a gravel road without signage.
Right.
And I think the improvements that we're making, you know, are improvements to the safety and the circulation there. I can't speak to the neighbors because I just spoke to them.
Yeah, I would agree, it was my understanding though that the town had used that just for egress as this building was, or that building was being built and it just kind of turned into a street, another one of those transgressions that concerns me, it just seems to happen all the time. In fact, there is a cable that goes across there that I've never seen up, but it's there implying that someone must put it up. So, I'm wondering, not to be hoping to stick in anybody's eye or delay this process, but we do need to go through the new process regarding that and assure that we, that it is, that we can zone it. I'm grateful for your service on V and Z and you're like the, the man to talk to about that.
I'll make sure French is covering those spaces and, and, and make sure that he's taking care of the requirements to make that up up and through.
Right, I have talked to the neighbors in that area and most seem fine, but I'm, I wouldn't take my word for it, I'm expecting seriously increased traffic over there.
Councilman Peralta? Councilman Raham, when we opened it as a temporary street, we did have discussions with the neighbors, but my recollection on that was it wasn't a discussion to keep it as a permanent street. And so, your, your comments are, are important at this point, although the, the street was, let's see, compared now, about fifteen years, it's been over. Go check it out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And then, one of the things, how about a sec, as a matter of...
Oh, yes.
Just want to make sure that they don't get covered up and if there is one, we want to make sure that it's taken care of.
I will second that, make sure it's taken care of. I know that there aren't any acacias on the, on the Taus Elementary Campus. Going along, you know, going along with the bigger project, there's, there's a gardening and orchard project that's, that's going on on the, on the Taus Elementary Campus. There has been talk about, you know, some of the old acacias that used to be able to irrigate Parkfield. And I do believe there's a portion of the acacia that comes down through the library property and I will make sure that French knows about that and sees to it that it's taken care of.
French had did talk about that, there is acacia there on the downside and we want to be absolutely respectful of that, but I, I believe French is aware and he assured me that the project would not impact that.
There is an acacia that goes along Monzanares.
Right through the, actually, middle of the property between Monzanares and Chitos. Like literally, like there's houses literally built almost on top of it.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't follow that one, there's a, there's an acacia that goes along Monzanares?
Right between Monzanares and Chitos, well, probably Martinez Lane and then cuts over into, uh, Chitos.
Monzanares is the street that goes south from, that will go south from Town Hall Drive down to, down Fernando? I wasn't aware of that.
Just look into it and bring it back to us and make sure that we're not introducing it loudly there. But one of the things, Monzanares is now a one-way street and I just, I bring it up and I need to ask the chief to stay because I know that, I don't want to point anything out, but there's cars with red lights on them that are going down the wrong way. And I know, I'm guilty because I didn't know it was a one-way street and, and I, one of the teachers there made sure that I knew it was a one-way street and it wasn't Saturday. So, I, again, just want to make sure that everybody knows that it is a one-way street now.
Is that all of Monzanares or just the school property?
Just the school property.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, I just want to make sure because people are still coming down the wrong way, just want to make sure that everybody knows.
Mr. Mayor, in that token, what's the likelihood of making Monzanares a one-way street as well? And I look at that with regards to my whole family group, I was born and raised on Monzanares and I thought it was a little premature for the school board to, you know, rebuild a school in that location given the narrow thoroughways that are there. I mean, you've got three-thirty afternoon traffic and buses squeezing through what should be a one-way, one-way street.
Mayor Bruni and Commissioner Governor Gonzalez, so at the, at the request of the town, Enos Garcia changed its traffic circulation so that the buses pick up and drop off on the internal portion of the campus and the stacking of the cars takes place on Monzanares. So, previous to that, the buses were using Monzanares and the stacking of the cars was taking place on Don Fernando and those streets simply couldn't respond to that. So, what this did is it, is it almost gave us a mile-long stacking pattern for the length of Monzanares all the way up into Town Hall Drive. And for, for, for all purposes, Monzanares Drive should be a one-way street going south to allow for that traffic pattern to, to operate smoothly. I think what's happening right now is there's a little bit of gray area because the portion of Monzanares at the southern end is not dedicated as a one-way street and it's certainly the wish of Taus Municipal Schools that it be dedicated as a one-way street and be developed that way and enforced as a one-way street for the safety of the students. And, and I think they're offering, the top half of Monzanares is circulation through there to relieve traffic within the town during peak times of Fiesta or Farmer's Market or, or any other functions.
To your neighbors.
I'd be happy to take that, I mean, I, I know, as far as I know, I mean, my whole family lives on that street or at one point lived on that street.
It's like starting a one-way trip.
Well, and the thing I look at is just the, the, I mean, again, maybe during school hours, might be a good time to, to host that between the hours of seven and nine and maybe two-thirty and four, just because it gets a little crazy in that area, chief.
So, we're on further discussion, any further discussion, in fact, call for the vote. It seemed on, call for the vote.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Rick, just backing up a little bit, there was a request put in and it hadn't been moved on, they were looking for a crosswalk between, I guess, a lot of the kids from the school walk to the Harwood Museum and there's a crosswalk over there that's missing and apparently a couple of times we've had issues where kids are near misses according to a couple of the teachers at the Harwood the other, the other Saturday, so I might not...
Are they crossing at the Harwood or are they crossing at the what?
They're crossing, there's a, there's a crosswalk that goes across the main street there across to the Harwood, there's one thing in there, but I see it, I can't remember what street you told us about.
Renchitas to Ludo?
I think so.
Maybe there's more than just a crosswalk missing there.
Maybe it's a speed enforcement.
It's, it's missing. Maybe it's a sign there. Uh, there are, yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilman, there are a number of crosswalks that we've been approached about, uh, by the post office, for example, that used to be there that aren't there that we've attempted.
Mr. Mayor, also, um, just with regards, I used to live at two twenty-seven Rancitos, which is literally right on that turn on Rancitos coming off of it. Not a good place for a crossing. I mean, it's, it's, it's a blind turn to begin with coming in. And, I mean, I used to hear emergency vehicles going through there. I swear to you, I was in the middle of the, of the day and at night. So, I mean, I used to, Todd Gravel lives directly, lived directly across the street. Used to caution these kids because he puts a basketball roll up there and the ball used to blow off into the street. And they used to play chicken to see who would go get it. So, you know, I just think it's, that whole street altogether needs some love and rework. Um, and I think maybe, Chief, one of the best ways to combat it is to start handing out some nice tickets within that area to send a message.
I think you need to cross the kids at the light.
At the light. Cells are, yeah, cells are in, and, and Monzanares light would be the best for a crosswalk, but I think speed enforcement would be good there. Stop me too if I'm moving.
Thank you. So we'll go on to item act request from village Acosta serves as a fiscal agent. Uh, consideration and possible direction to staff regarding a request from the village Acosta for, for the Town House to serve as a fiscal agent for its, uh, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen legislative appropriation. Uh, Mr. Bellis?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, councilman. Uh, as you're aware, Mayor, this is an item that was brought to us at the very last minute, uh, from the, uh, mayor and council of Acosta. Uh, as a result of follow-up meeting, we had the DFA who visited us and was talking about, uh, difficulties under the new governor's requirements that if you do not have an audit completed, you will not get funding from the legislature. The governor will not sign off at all. If you have an audit that has any substantial deficiencies in it or deficiencies that are repeated, uh, year to year, uh, you will be required to have fiscal agent tag when you do that. Anticipate, this will be one of the issues we'll discuss with the county. Uh, they have received half of the money that we were looking for to do communal gineo, uh, and that will have to come to the county's fiscal agent. In this case, uh, I believe you had it in your packet, there were three appropriations getting to Acosta and subsequently come to our attention, number two from the prior year, um, in which they are requesting that the county serve as fiscal agent. Now, there's no action being requested at this time. However, uh, the money that goes through the environment department for the water and sewer projects, they're required to provide a notification by, uh, it was originally going to be Tuesday night. It's now going to be Friday. Yet is there an interest? All I have to state is whether there is an interest or willingness on part of the town to consider doing this. There's a standard document that would be provided by MFA and Marietta in doing her research, uh, in, in developing that form. We're looking for, uh, this may be, be now a moot point because if they have not concluded their audit for the prior year funded, and then, uh, they stand at risk to lose that funding under recapture.
Councilor Peralta, a number of, also the votes.
Are you, are you looking at the hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the top here?
There are, yes. In addition to those three items, there's actually two items which they did not get to us in the prior year.
From two thousand twelve?
Two thousand twelve, that's correct.
So they, they've lost all five or just, just one from the prior year?
They're in jeopardy, please. Um, depending on how DFA, Mr. Saddle interprets it on behalf of the governor, they could be in jeopardy of losing all five.
Plus two thousand fourteen.
Correct.
Which is another two hundred.
Correct.
And looks like.
So we can't, we couldn't by being their fiscal agent, say?
Rick, uh, just with visiting them, Councilor Peralta, um, they are doing everything they can right now to get that audit in place. If they get that audit in place, this would save them, if they get the audit in place, but they gotta put the audit in place before, you know. But they need this to be able.
Yeah, um, Mayor, uh, councilman, I would, I would also indicate that we made it very clear to the town, uh, for the village of Acosta that they would have to abide by our procurement procedures for us to be comfortable. But we're not willing to take on any risk of them actually handling the bidding process and the reporting process.
Couldn't we just do it for them? Handle whatever you?
Yeah, certainly an option, um, that.
I mean, protect ourselves. I'm not looking at it except as a protection to ourselves. Because if we let them do out the bidding process and pay the vouchers and all we do is just sign the checks, and then what kind of liability is that on our?
That was kind of, kind of run right into my question was that I want to make sure too, you know, and this is something we, we talked about, Mr. Mayor, was the fact, um, anytime we take over programs and we all said on that meeting, the FAA, that, you know, the, the, it, it's in place so that you get your audits in control, number one, so that they actually get performed. Um, but I, I can look at this and say, okay, number one, um, are we looking at, at charging an admin fee with regards to that? Two, three, it's up to between two and four percent, uh, number one, for staff time to, to oversee. Um, but number two, I want to make sure that, you know, anything that we engage in, in from here on out, as anybody's fiscal agent, or any programs we take over, we don't incur their audits or their audit exceptions with us. And I think that's something we touched on much like the county. It's one of their big portions of audit exceptions came from county housing. Um, so that's where I look at this. I mean, I'm sure we're going to get a lot more requests, um, like through the, through the pipeline, especially now that the city has been deemed the, the, you know, the, taking the ability to, to run fiscal agency. I don't at the same point want to risk our viability as fiscal agent and then now we turn everything over to the state, uh, for, for funding. So I guess just along the lines of Councilor Peralta saying is still being able to, to oversee the entire project or, you know, run through procurement, not allowing them to, 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 I guess oversee or take it to, to then throw us into default of audit exceptions.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with both of the councilmen here. I believe that that would be the only reasonable condition for us to accept this under is that in fact, we act as complete agent for all funds and procurement. Uh, to do otherwise, not only would place us to create a risk, but beyond that two or four percent we would charge, we mean that we would be responsible for reporting under both their audit and our audit for the same funds. And that, that would be unacceptable.
So on this item, basically we would be directing staff to go back and create a, a document, um, with the provisions that, you know, we would be the fiscal agent under certain conditions, et cetera.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm going to ask the question, do you want to do it?
Um, Mr. Mayor, councilman, uh, there are more issues on the table than just this money. And, you know, it affords the town a certain amount of, um, leverage on certain issues.
I'm just saying, you know, I mean, if you want to do it, then, and I think the council will stand behind you, but if you don't want to do it, we'll also stand behind you. And, and I'm just saying, based upon your, um, relating to us your concerns. So I'm just saying that, you know, you have to let this thing out and say, if this comes to be and we do become a fiscal agent, all of that responsibility and work that's going to take place on this is something that you want you and your staff to give priority.
Councilman Peralta, um, if we in fact had complete control, uh, I would feel comfortable doing this and I would recommend doing it, uh, as benefit to all citizens and community. Uh, given the exceptions and prior audits and my familiarity with them, I would not agree under any other circumstances that, and given their switching of managers and finance people and it, it's an all or nothing. But yes, I'm comfortable with it if, uh, if the FAA agrees that that money would be passing directly through the town.
And just one more question, Mr. Mayor. Um, so that, I guess we get clear that, I mean, I, I guess my concern is number one, that they don't lose that kind of money because of benefits under New Mexico. If we can relay that message to the state as well too, that we will take the money for them, uh, run procurement and disperse funds so that we are guaranteed that, you know, they don't lose out and kind of do them the favor of not putting them in risk of losing it, should they have audit exception. Um, but at the same point, we take, um, the responsibility of making sure that we oversee how it's spent and how it's taken care of. So if that's a possibility, uh, just to alleviate them the risk of, of losing it as well.
And Rick, we probably want to look at you for a percentage also for, for what you think it would be compared.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would want to speak with our auditors to see how this would affect our audit costs, uh, before we would fix that percentage. I don't believe that we should charge them any more than our actual costs are. And after me with Marietta, I think we had originally figured our internal cost could be covered by two percent. But again, the audit costs will be the question mark right now.
So?
Oh, just, Mayor, I, I think that I would make a motion to give direction to the mayor and the manager to end the attorney to work on an agreement with Acosta and DFA that will, uh, assist in protecting these funds for, for Acosta and also protect us in, you know, our relationship with, um, DFA and our auditors and Acosta and everybody else in the community.
I have a motion.
Take it. Further discussion? Well, just a couple of quick ones. Um, you mentioned that magic word procurement. Um, I, I do have concerns about that. So are we, who is doing a procurement request? We are.
Correct.
And so is our procurement, uh, process, um, completely squeaky clean and verified.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilman, I, I believe so. Um, in fact, the, the mayor, um, and councilman Gonzalez were present at the meeting with the director of DFA, the division of the local governments. And other than his not knowing the difference between Taus County and Town House, which gave us a little heartburn, um, he indicated that we had no significant findings and of minor findings in the past two audits. Uh, they are of, uh, the tagging of assets and recording and depreciation of assets, which became a priority in the last year in the instructions from the, uh, state to, uh, the auditors doing the audits. But there was nothing in the procurement procedure that would indicate that we had any flaws in that process whatsoever.
Thank you. The other question is staffing. Um, most departments, um, with the exception of the executive branch have been cut. Can our staff handle this increase burden?
Uh, Mayor, councilman, I, I believe that they can. Um, I discussed this with finance department already. Um, revenues, uh, going forward are going to have to be, uh, achieved creatively. And if in fact, we have a top-notch finance department, and one of the ways we can reward those people, um, under our current constraints is if they take on more work, that the percentage of money that we bring in accordingly to accommodate that work can be paid to them in some form of incentive for doing that work. I think that's, uh, a good situation for the staff. Uh, it's a good situation for the public.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Not call for the vote.
Councilor Chris? Yes, Councilor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilor Peralta?
Yes.
That's my right.
Yes.
Thank you. It just shows good collaboration with our neighbors. Go back to the mayor and the councilman. Uh, you, councilmember?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there are two additional.
I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, MG, Griffin Associates, Mr. Bellis?
Uh, this is for informational purposes only. Again, uh, to get input from the council if there's any concerns. Uh, the contract will be up on June thirtieth with Griffin Associates. We can renew that for one more year. Uh, we could decide not to, but there were, um, concerns expressed at a number of the committees that interact, the tourism committee, the, um, the, the marketing committee, um, in regards to some changes that were made. The mayor and myself had a meeting, um, with Joni Griffin and asked for certain changes. Um, and I believe it would be a wise move, um, considering that at some point here, we have to develop a new RFP anyway, uh, to be earlier to that table rather than later and to get, to put out a public announcement that we would hold a forum at which, uh, we would gather input from the, uh, hotels and generators and lodging, tax, restaurants, uh, from the tourism committees, the marketing committees around town, the chamber of commerce, at which we could look for improvements that they would like to see in the RFP process and in the marketing plan itself. Um, I don't want that to draw the conclusion that we would not necessarily renew the contract with, uh, Griffin Associates, but I think the input from the community, uh, would be very helpful for myself and for this volume moving forward. And that's it. Unless you have any questions?
I think, I think her contract is massageable enough that you can make changes that you see fit to, to the marketing plan, um, to make adjustments that, that will improve the contract through and give it, you know, its final year and allow us then to, to put together a, a task force to, to look at how we want to, um, put together in our people future contractors on our marketing program.
That was all I really had to go through.
And I hope we can get something done. The reason I'm, we, in meeting with her, there was a situation where there was, I want to say some product that was going to come out that I didn't think is, there's people that had a heartache, to say the least.
A heartburn.
A heartburn. I just want to make sure that, you know, as some of this comes out, that, you know, there, I mean, without, you know, airing dirty laundry here, I just want to make sure that, you know, we, you know, in giving her instructions, we didn't think it was a good option or a good way to advertise our community. I don't think, uh, you know, um, she took it to heart. She basically trying to move forward with it, even though we're trying to give her direction that it's not the best way to, to advertise our community. Um, so that's, I think that's what Rick was alluding to. I don't think he was, he was strong enough to buy it.
Come on, Rick, tell us how you feel.
We, we received a lot of emails, um, which started off, there's a name for it and it isn't Taus. And the joke got pretty thin after three or four days. I mean, if we can work through that, we can get something done.
So what's our, our plan, uh, Rick? We've got a year left on this country. And I'm hearing Councilman Peralta saying there's some, um, maneuverability there. Um, it's a boatload of money and we have a boatload of repairs. What's the plan?
The only thing with, with, with lodgers' tax money, uh, this can't be used for roof repairs and that type of stuff. It has to be used for advertisement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, but I've gotten a fair amount of, um, feedback, uh, from our citizens out there that they really like an idea that, uh, Mr. Bellis actually floated, um, a while back, which was, uh, holding big slam ban events, that kind of thing. Um, there's a little support for that out there. So, you know. So, you know...
Mr. Mayor, I'm all for that because I think that this community could stand alone on, you know, four or five good events a year. But I guess the problem that we've encountered with it in the past is the lodgers. And the lodgers tax advisory board seem fit where that money goes and how it gets spent. They have a pretty good input and pull with regards to, to how the funding is pulled. I'd love to see three, four Mumford events, you know, in Tassie Year because we know we can, we can handle it. And we saw the residual in GRT come off of what it meant. Just yet, at the same point, I, you know, I think they would trade four or five events for stability over a year longer. And that's just the message I've been relating for many of the lodgers, especially given that a good portion of their, their lodging taxes go towards that fund.
Yeah, I have a comment to add to that, but right now is the perfect opportunity. We have to collaborate with the county and with the arts and cultural district for the monies that are available to promote events, 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 which is crucial. And there is a lot of comment from the public as far as the marketing with Taos. And I have invited a lot of people to go to either the Tuesday morning marketing at the chamber office or the lodgers tax board meeting that they had the last Tuesday that we met, so that people have better knowledge of what's going on and where the monies are coming from. And there is an outcry for going local.
So, Mr. Bellis, does that mean that we're going to maintain the status quo, have some community forums, and try and re-engineer this over the next year? Is that essentially what you're saying?
My, my plan, based on the meetings I attended, would be to try to get that community input now. We're looking at a very difficult summer, not just because of the economy, but if, because of prolonged drought, and I say it's about 62 percent, some people say it's as high as 81 percent, where it's related to public lands in one way or another, including the ski valley. If, as of January, there was a realistic projection by US Forest Service and the Chamber of Circle Fire Chiefs that the forest could close as early as May through October. We don't know, of course, what the monseels are going to bring, but we do know, thank goodness, we have the National Mine Event and the LM is not going to close the gorge, and we're probably going to have more attention to that than ever. But we also know that based on the very figures and tables that were provided by Griffin Associates, we've reached a plateau where we're getting diminishing returns. In marketing for a brand, we're reaffirming to people that know us globally and nationally for our skiing and for our historic areas. And the problem we're hitting right now is, no matter how hard you market, we need something new, something more that attracts people and keeps them here. And as the skiing proved, and many of us had stand out here at, at dusk and watched people come off the mountain, and then they go right through the town and go south. As Mumford proved, people came out and wanted to do something and got back in their cars and said, well, there's nothing open if I've got to eat, well, just get in the car and go back to Santa Fe. We, we need to take a, a new approach, and that means working with our businesses. It means creating, you know, something works like, like music on the plaza that attracts 700 people on one night on a Thursday, why aren't we doing, why don't we have the pueblo doing some drum circles and dances on Wednesday night? A number of people have talked about how, when they were younger, and there was sort of an shadows music and some of the historic music of their people here played on the plaza, and people used to dance all night to that. I, I know someone that hasn't been here that long, when I came here 10 years ago, I would have loved to see that on the plaza, and that would have kept me here for the night. Our restaurants are closed at nine o'clock. We, we need to take into approach, and I'm not saying this all has to do with Griffin Associates, but maybe when you're getting a diminishing return and, and her numbers going forward are flatlining the same way as our projection, and that's no coincidence, that we're looking at flat revenues because that's from, we get our revenues from GRTs. And that means if we're not getting a better return on getting tourism here, we've got to either develop another industry or we've got to take another approach to tourism. And I have to think there's more ideas up, and I, I will say two things that I think are valid, and that is that there's a very incestuous relationship between the loders tax board and the marketing group. And I was told that this body never appointed the members to the marketing group. The first time when I was at the county and asked to be part of that, I was told that it's just, you show up, you're a part of it, and you need your ideas. Today, Councilwoman Cantu and I were told, you can't vote. It's just those of us that are on the committee. And there were probably 12, 13, 15 people in the room, and five people, all of whom, half of whom are under contract to Joni Griffin, did the voting on what the campaign would be. And the rest of the folks are on the loders tax board who are getting money from Joni Griffin. I find that violates the use of public funds. So if nothing else, I think we need to look at that process, because when I hear that the focus group on this latest campaign was seven people, all of whom live in Taos and somehow benefit from that campaign, and not that we went out and went to Albuquerque or those groups that were trying to solicit to come here, I'm a little uncomfortable as to whose needs we're serving. I'm also uncomfortable with the fact that in the month, in this role, and prior to that, in the county role of attending those meetings, I see our local people here on those volunteer committees actually putting the campaign together and doing the work. And Joni's just on speakerphone, and I'm concerned about that when someone tells me, well, I haven't really done the Solar Fest, I haven't been to the Fiesta's, we just hire somebody to go there. And how do you market us that way? The mayor and I asked the 10 questions that we've heard the most from people in the community. How can you distinguish us from the other eight, 10 communities you're marketing? And to be honest with you, your campaign looks very generic, like you're doing for Hobbs and Veraleo and everyone else. And the answer was, well, you're my only account, I work on you full-time, but how can you do that if you're never here?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Gonzalez? Um, I think with regards to that, Rick, I would highly entertain that it be an appointed board, just like any other board that, that serves this community, appointed by the mayor, ratified by the council, with regards to the individuals that sit on the marketing committee board. How did it become the, you know, five individuals controlled with the pocketbook of the entire lodgers and city?
It was my understanding that about six, nine months ago, the loders tax advisory board was made, made the advertising, the marketing. Not within the town, and I'm not saying that that's necessarily right or not, but that's what we've done. And so, the mayor and the manager were working with them and Joni Griffin Associates to do the marketing plan. But what I said is the contract is, is general enough that you can, and it's your responsibility as, as the town to determine yes or no to whatever is going to be used as marketing. So Joni Griffin and Associates' basic contract is to place. In other words, if you say, I want everything to go through, through Facebook, then her job is to place in Facebook. And also to assist you in the development or production of whatever is the, the advertising thing is going to be. So based on that contract, you still have the ability to go in and say, no, if you think that what we're doing now as a badge, you want to change, change it. If you want to not do Facebook, don't do it. So those are the things that you can do. It's, it's just her responsibility, but she gets her $25,000 for it, is to place the $325,000 that we give, based upon what that committee, whatever you want to make, whoever you want to appoint to that committee, you can do to determine how you want to do that marketing plan. So if you want to do an event, and you say, I want to take $25,000 out of the plan and use that as a marketing for a particular event, you can do that. And say how you want to use it in that marketing plan.
Councilman Peralta, I, I agree with you. That was my understanding in reading the contract in my initial meeting with her as well. However, clearly, the mayor and I reflected certain things we wanted reported back and done before this campaign proceeded. And I received a phone call and had to rush to a marketing meeting at which that same campaign 24 hours later was being launched. And the people being asked to make those decisions about Facebook or not Facebook with the marketing committee, at that point, it was brought to my attention that I was a latecomer to this campaign. Since I had actually seen the initial preview of the galleys that were being proposed, I didn't think so. But it was also on the agenda that the mayor and the manager had approved the campaign, which I absolutely did not. So then when I questioned that, I was told that while the prior council had approved the campaign, which I found hard to believe since she had just come out with the galleys of it and the concept, and so had the manager, and in talking to the assistant manager, she said, that never happened. We had two presentations, which was for the extra $90,000 for youth campaign, which again, I was surprised because we were targeting the youth and the younger crowd and through social media. And then when, at today's meeting, we're told by the same folks, oh, nobody reads Facebook, that's a waste of time. So we were a little confused on that one. But again, I can find no evidence, and I don't want to say somebody's lying, but I think that inaccuracies were represented about who gave approvals to that. And my representation was, when asked, why was I having objections, is that if, when I was in business, if I paid somebody a half million dollars for marketing, I expected them to come to the customer and have three options and say, well, these are your choices, we've done some surveys on this, this one works, this one doesn't. And in the end, they should argue the one they believe is best for you as a client, but you're the client. And I don't see that happening. I see that it's being driven by the marketer. And without proper research as to whether the campaign is effective or proper input from the community that's putting up those dollars.
I'm not disagreeing at all, I'm believing that. And the driving has to be from this side, not this. But, and if, and if you don't like the placement, then it is your right to change that placement and, and change the program. In other words, the council, you know, in agreeing to add another $90,000 or whatever it was that we added to the project, was agreeing we need to put more money into marketing. That's from the council side. It's, you know, and we're saying, okay, now staff and marketing group, you guys determine how you're going to best utilize that money to improve the, the return on our investment coming back to the community during the summertime. That's, that's what we did, and that was the policy that we set. Beyond that, I can't say anything because that's where I leave it. And I leave it up to, to others to make that determination and use their expertise to, to make those decisions. And if the wrong group is making those decisions, then that has to be reeled back in. And I can understand what you're saying, is that if we got the wrong people or people who think they're supposed to be making decisions but really aren't supposed to be doing it, let's change it.
Mr. Mayor, Council Rick, I'll tell you, one counselor I never saw that eye of his looking, because I've never sent up one. And that's just, we never dabbled in that stuff, never gave approvals for that. We always left it at the purview of both the marketing committee and LTV. So I think now is maybe a good sign for some change.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor? Were you finished?
Counselor James. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, and thank you for your forthright, Mr. Bellis. I'm glad I asked the question. I'm sorry I asked the question. So if I understand in my conversations with Joni and, and others, they're already working three months out with ad placement and so on and so forth. There needs to be a transition so that we don't end up in debt or so to speak. If that makes sense? And yet, public forums are, are going to take some time. Really, it's sounding to me like you and the mayor want some flexibility to adjust some things, to create the forums, and to actually maybe revisit the marketing committee and how it's appointed and so on and so forth. I think it's unconscionable that our own mayor and manager can go to the marketing committee and be treated like that. If I'm hearing you right, now it's 10 o'clock, it's past our bedtime, so maybe I'm not. But if what I heard you say is correct, that's unconscionable.
I, I do want to be clear on that. That was not the marketing committee that the mayor and I went to, had a meeting with Ms. Griffin herself. Meeting of the marketing committee was with Councilwoman Cantu and myself.
Okay, okay. So anyway, so do I have that about right? We're, we're in a state of flux, we're going to kind of move gently forward with Joni for a handful of months. We have a year left on our contract. Do you want, as Councilman Peralta suggested, some flexibility to try some things and bring the community together?
And the contract actually expires on June 30th, and at that point, speaking with the town attorney, we would have the option to extend it for a year, extend it for a month, extend it month to month under a round a, a basis. I would not propose that we suddenly just tomorrow morning cut off our advertising. But I will, and, and then I do have the concerns that you expressed, that, you know, we should be working three, four months ahead. I am in fact concerned that we weren't working three months ahead, that we seem to be in a rush right now to get out the advertising for spring, to complete this year. We haven't even started to talk about the summer campaign. And in most communities I've been in, we generally spin your theme for next year's season at this time. You're not developing the final copy till three months ahead of that, but you're reserving your space, you're deciding what your branding's going to be and what adjustments you need to make.
Well, this campaign was supposedly going to the television station for a commercial today, and it was going to hit Austin, Albuquerque, Denver, Boulder. I can't recall if he said Utah also, but that was going to a television station today.
And again, Councilwoman, I find that a little unnerving that we were making decisions at 11 o'clock this morning and literally being told we had to hurry up so that Ms. Griffin could go downstairs and cut the copy and put it on tape to get it on there.
So the production hadn't been done yet?
It was scheduled for today.
So you had no way of viewing the, the production?
We were doing this by speakerphone.
And it's just a matter of test. The test could easily be changed.
Well, now, this is television, right?
That was television, correct.
So there's got to be video, I mean, visual.
Well, I don't know if that one's possible to stop at this point since it's Monday.
No, 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 I'm just saying that you should have had an opportunity to, to preview the production.
They did. I think, I think you had not arrived yet when they showed the commercial, or did you see it?
No.
Okay, because they, she put, they played it several times for everybody who was in the room. And, I mean, it's a beautiful commercial, but... And, I mean, it's a beautiful commercial, but the cows and the branding is, is the problem with a lot of people, except for the marketing committee.
So what's your, excuse me, Mr. Mayor and Council. So what's your, what's your plan then, Mr. Bellas, since the contract's up in June? How do you want to go?
I would like the opportunity to bring members of the community in that directly pay into this advertising and that are also affected by it, but those that have been somewhat critical and, and there also, I believe, needs to be a number of questions asked about why are campaigns rushing to the last minute? And we would like to gather that input from the community and come back here with some rational recommendations, which may be extend it for a year because it's going to take that long. It may be that Johnny's very willing to adapt to some of those recommendations as she mentioned indicated. So I, I would not presume to give you the final answer until the public does give you the input.
Can I ask a question, Rick? How much of this marketing is supposed to be geared towards being in New Mexico? I mean, I'm here in Dallas and outside markets, but I spent Christmas in Carlsbad because it's not carbs and, and, and Christmas on the pickles. So it's, I'm looking for vocal draw at the same time as, as outside draw.
Yeah, one of the things that I asked for and got from, for example, Solar Fest, was they do these bubble maps which show how many people that responded their advertising came from what areas. And it is pretty remarkable how many people we draw from just across the border in Colorado or from the Albuquerque area, or from south of there in Roswell, the only Texas border. So if I was looking at advertising dollars, I would want to see that. Who, who actually responds to those ads and what areas did they come from? And I don't have that information, and I believe in the questions we asked, that information wasn't available.
According to Johnny and Janet Webb, at the lodger's tax meeting every month, unless I'm seeing false information, you know, they always have the data and the stats there of, you know, what their hits are and, and, and they monitor like Pandora or ATV or whatever, you know, she's advertising. And they're not doing so much publications as they are now, internet and radio. But, but she does have those.
And that, that's in regards to the website?
And it's, Janet, Janet has that information.
Councilman Peralta?
One of your best sources of information to prove your advertising, the visitor's center. And we need to get our staff there to get the people who come in for information, to give them information. Where did you hear about us? When did you hear about us? Why did you come here? Was it based upon what you saw in our advertising or not? And that information then gives credence to somebody advertising we're doing. The other thing you can look at, and this is something that I asked Johnny a year ago, and that is, when people come to our website, how long do they stay on? In other words, it's not the number of hits, it's the length of hits. And where are those hits from? The longer the hits are, where are they from? Are they from within the eight hundred mile distance that eighty-five percent of your customers are going to come from? And by the way, twenty-five percent of the customers come from, come to us, are from within the state of Mexico. And so when you start looking at some of that data, it starts giving you an idea as to whether or not your marketing campaign is really paying off or not. It's, but you, it's some of those things you don't look at. They like to see numbers, you know? We had five thousand hits yesterday. How long were they on there?
It's my understanding that Janet has that information, because they're talking about it all the time, how many hits they're getting on house.org and for ten seconds or however many seconds that they stay on there. They don't have the dashboard, which is a whole different monitoring system, but...
But what I'm trying to say is that if you get, you know, only ten percent of the people are staying on there for thirty seconds or more, it's, it's, it's just a mis-hit. You know, it's not somebody wanting to go outside because they wanted to, it's somebody who got on our website by accident. It's like, you know, when I was at the fair, you know, the, the number one country that looked at our website, you figure this one, Japan. And stayed the longest on the website. Now, why would people from Japan be interested in a state fair website? Interesting. Do we get people coming to the state fair from Japan? No. So it's one of those things you have to look at and say, the best place for us to make a real educated decision about the quality of our advertising and what it brings to us is that visitor's center, because that's the person who actually came here. And it's, and we've got staff there, that's what they should be doing, getting that information for us so that we can compile.
Well, and, and one more thing along with that, I would think the people that have the most vested interest in this are the lodgers. I was in Farmington on Friday for a track meet, checking in at eleven PM, and the hotel attendant's on check-in asking what I'm there for. And she started off for events that were going on, track wasn't one of them, so she still wrote it down. And she said that they reported back to, this was Mariah, they reported back to Mariah. Mariah had allocated funding based on how, where their hits were within that region. And obviously, it's the San Juan area being a big oil-producing area, that's probably their number one hit, is their for oil business. But at the same time, this weekend had a cross-country meet, it had a soccer tournament. They were logging everything that was coming, and the hotel was sold out all three minutes. So of anybody that I would see that would have the vested interest in it would be the lodgers. They're already dealing the face-to-face, I don't go to the visitor's center, anywhere I travel. I look to my hotel to give me, or hotel concierge to give me the information I want. So I would think that being that the lodgers are at the forefront of this, people have to check in, they got to pick up their room keys, to spend just two minutes during the check-in process asking them what they're doing. So I think that marketing goes a long ways in, in defining that, also with the hotel owners, to how they want to see this marketing spend.
So, so Rick, on this item, what are you looking for from us for, are you just looking for some direction to go out and talk to, create this forum, or what are you looking for?
I think it's politically sensitive issue. It's a half million dollars. It's probably the single largest expenditure you make that affects the revenue that is going to come into you for GRTs and lodger's tax. So it's not something I would have gone off on my own and said, hey, let's take a direction and you're going to read it in the newspaper and get a lot of calls about it. No matter what direction you take, it's going to be hot. There are going to be people that have strong opinions either way. But typically, your marketing should be a year ahead of the curve. And if we're thinking that maybe we either want to change the direction of the branding, or how we spend the money, or maybe even change the marketing firm, that's something we should be looking at now, and we should try to get as much input from those that are affected in the community as possible as early as we can in the process, get their body in.
So what you're looking for is to create a, a group or bring those people that, that pay into, to the table, and then create a RFP to go forward in the new process? And possibly bringing Johnny in and telling her that we're not happy with the revenue?
Well, to create an informational forum, to gather data, to gather input, but also to then use that group and that information to shape forward whatever the RFP is for the coming year. To have some direction.
Mr. Mayor, regardless, in a year, we're going to have to go out on RFP anyway, and I think what, what Rick is going to gain to us is that we should be going out for that in January of next year at the latest, rather than trying to do it in March or April or May. Because you need to have, if, if you're going to do that, you've got to get that new company on board to start setting up when their, when their contract comes up, to start looking at a three-month-out program rather than overnight. And this is what, what is, I, I believe Rick is trying to tell us. And so it's going to take a while until you get together to do that so that you can go out and, and find the right firm that you're going to want to move forward with in the future, regardless of who that is. All right?
Yes, thank you. Some direction? Okay. All right. So we'll go on to item H, lease of the old police building, Bellas?
Again, this is for informational purposes. Obviously, we own the building that the Ancianos program operates out of. They have an agreement with us to do so. There's absolutely no question at this point, the county has been requested by the state to take over that program and will do so no later than July first. They've also already started assuming some of the operational management aspects. The Ancianos program subleases space to the area office on aging, which is the state and regional office that operates out of there. They would like to stay in the area to correct the, to do a mold remediation. There are some construction issues over there that the state has allocated money to the county to correct. Those offices need to be relocated. We've been approached by the county and asked if we would be interested in leasing the front area of the old police department that used to be the reception area as we came in the lobby, where was the detective area right behind that, and the two offices behind the counter. Additionally, and they're willing to pay anywhere between eight hundred, twelve hundred dollars, that was their offer. I didn't, you know, recommend a figure. We just put that out. It would involve no renovations. They're willing to accept it as is, provide their own furniture. There's also a request as a net, that, that came up as a result of providing a visit to that staff. The county has to find somewhere for its juvenile court staff, which the state is putting more money into, it needs to be large. They were sharing an office in the back of the district attorney's office. The DA needs that space now, so they're about to be displaced. And they are interested in using the rest of the area, not the nine-one-one area, the rest of that office and space behind what the area office on aging would use. I felt it appropriate to come to the council. I was not part of the long-term discussions in regards to that building before coming on, but again, to reflect that there is an interest. And I indicated to the county and the office on aging that I would bring that request to council and try to get direction from you guys together, if there would be an interest in leasing.
Councilman Peralta?
I think it's a good idea to, to get after. The only thing I would suggest is that there would be no disturbance of carpeting. The VA tile underneath does have asbestos, and so just for health reasons. If they go in there, that they can't do any renovations to it because of the created asbestos requirement. And I still think there's asbestos in between the, the old two and the roof and that insulation.
Councilman, the other move we would need to make is we made it clear to them that the zero where there's a metal fire door between the E nine-one-one area and the back hallway that comes in there, and that because the radio star still are in there, that while we can provide a panic bar through the hallway, there would have to be absolutely no access to the old nine-one-one area, it has to remain secure.
I guess the wish is for him to bring something back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. So then we go item matters from the mayor and council, you council member, town boards and commissions, discussion and direction to staff regarding appointments, planning and zoning commission, historic preservation commission, and lodger's tax advisory board. Council, huh, okay, I thought you were... And my recommendation, council, is that we direct staff to put out a notice that we're looking for people to serve on these, and, and I think it would be a good opportunity for us to, you know, see who's interested in our community to serve on these boards and, and give them that opportunity. Councilman Peralta?
Are you suggesting that, that we replace everybody on these boards or just the ones that are coming up for the report?
Just the ones that are coming up for the report.
So to keep some control.
Correct.
There were also...
I would just suggest that you put out a memo to us as to how many positions on each board are, are coming available and how long the term is, so that if we talk to people out in the community, we can let them know that if they're interested, this is the length of time they would be serving and so forth. Also, whether they mean once a month, once every, a month, or on-call, or just give them, just, because we're going to get those questions answered right.
Mr. Mayor, also, just with regards to the individuals that do sit there about to turn out, if they're still desiring to serve, would those individuals still have that option without the need? I mean, obviously, if somebody else wants to serve, I guess that board can tuck it out, but it is a board that's appointed anew and verified on this.
Do you need to... Rick? Okay. So, council reports and committee assignments, Councilor Hahn?
A couple of weeks back, I had asked if we could report back, everyone here sits on different commissions and boards. And I sit on the landfill in IGC, and landfill has been quite busy. I'm going to keep it short. We're running a deficit. Mary DeFamro thinks we'll be in the black by the end of this fiscal year, but then in the next fiscal year, the deficit will be, it's projected about one-hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. We have not had a, a, an increase in services offered by the landfill in thirteen years. We carry a large debt load with equipment that's out there. And the issue that we are grappling with is simple. IGC members are looking at increases. We are hoping to get the final numbers tomorrow. There's three or four different scenarios on the board, and non-members as well. Essentially, to get in the black and to create the reserves that is necessary for this landfill operation, we're looking at increases of going from twenty-nine fifty, a ton to thirty-five fifty, greater than a twenty percent increase. The question is, how are we going to start breaking that out? Is it going to be a lump sum, a sudden jump, a sudden twenty-two, twenty-three percent increase? Are we going to step it up over time? Are there some loans that perhaps we can renegotiate and help lower the burden to our citizens, our consumers? So tomorrow, we'll be meeting yet again. And at the next council meeting, I'll be bringing back the board, the landfill board's And then this council will need to discuss it and we'll move forward. Do you have, Mr. Bellas has been allowing, do you have anything you want to add to this?
I think that's pretty accurate.
Okay. So very much in flux, we'll know something tomorrow, and, and then I'll be bringing it back to the board. It's, it's my intent with this to, IGC will be meeting for the first time tomorrow, the government and council. So our next meeting, I'd like to give a brief report there. Many heads are better than one. Councilman Peralta has been serving for years and Councilman Gonzalez, and so I need your input. Mr. Bellas is obviously very adept, and the mayor's been serving for a decade. Ms. Cantu and I... Ms. Cantu and I have maybe fresh approaches and interesting questions, but I think if we work together as a team, we can do our best. That being said, that is my report on the landfill and nothing to report really on IGC. And I was hoping to hear from, and this is just my thinking, I don't know how the mayor or anyone else feels about this, but I was hoping to hear from Councilman Cantu and TCEDC, Councilman Gonzalez, and the nominating committee with the hospital. I would like some clarification on whether this body actually has a board member on Holy Cross. Now, Councilman Peralta, I know you're going to apply, but that's as a citizen, not as a city councillor. So some clarification that way.
Let me just... The board makeup, I guess that's what I put it, has changed since I was on the board at Holy Cross. There was, at one point in time, you had physicians, which was the chief of staff in one of the position. Now there's four. You had two members from Southern District, two members from Northern District, two members from the Senate. You had a finance person. You had one elected official, not the county commission. So it could be a judge, it could be a community peer, or from one of the other municipalities. And then you had somebody from healthcare outside of the position. And that was the makeup. That has changed somewhat. There is still an elected person on the board, and that's Chris Seda, Skida. So he can fill that position. So, but that's all there was, that we would have one elected official, but not the county commission because of the fact that the county owns the facility. And so to keep parts linked between the county and the board, that was the policy set by both the county commission and the board. That's pretty much the makeup. Now, we do, we did appoint, and under the nominating committee, I made a request last year that we had somebody from the university of that, and they did do that. So there is a member from Northern District. And so we get pretty much the region that the board, not the board, but the hospital supports is now pretty well represented by members of the community. Now, the board through the nominating committee, which was part of an agreement with the county commission when we built the hospital, is that there would be members from the community as well as board members to nominate people to, and we would take applications to that community from the community based upon the position that they're going to fill. So for example, there's three positions to be filled now. One is at-large, which is the one Charlie Gonzalez is filling, and he's going to ask the report, the board can say yes or no. There is one position that is from the south, which is the vineyard center. And then there's one person from the center. And the one person from the center or at-large would be what I would call...
Thanks. So, Mr. Mayor, that was my hope, just to give board or commission brief reports and perhaps forming consensus if needed. Certainly, when this landfill increase comes across, I will give you a report and we'll need your guidance.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, a quick bridge with regards to the landfill board. The one thing that I've talked over with the manager here within the last couple of weeks is slowing down the need for another cell. I think that can be done through a recycling program initiative through the city. Obviously, it would have to be joint city-county driven, as we've talked to the operators, waste management, and saying that if there was some way to offer a curbside recycling, then yes, it would come at an increase to the bill payer now, but I think it would be minimal and also de-accelerate the need to open a new cell within the next couple of years. Maybe also help offset. I mean, I guess for me, it's looking for ideas and ways to, number one, reduce the need for landfill, because at some point in this future, we're going to run out of space. And number two, I mean, there's obviously a way for the city to gain some residual back on the recycling aspect of it as well. I know some numbers have been tossed around, and maybe not so much as numbered, but more brainstorming between the county and the city. Obviously, both aspects would need to come as a package deal to make it work. But I think at the stage that we're in and where we're in, it would probably move us to start a more serious conversation with regards to how that moves forward. Just with a thought, I know I've seen initial numbers of a curbside recycling increasing waste cost by about $4.85 for a separate bin. I mean, that's a starting point. At least it kind of gives us and gears us knowing forward where we're going. I think small price to pay versus the cost of $890,000 you set.
Cost of profluent?
With a curbside recycling program within the town, you only have it within the town is because you only have 6,000, 7,000 people that you're getting. What needs to happen in order to get a real recycling program going is if we could get the county to do curbside trash picking, because then you could put, as you would in the town, put a separate bit for recycling, because it can have trash rather than using the convenience centers and shit like that. Rio River County does that in there, and they pick up basically almost curbside. Finally, they went to dumpster, by the way, and then they took all the kids in the trash bags out of the street. Finally, which was driving me crazy. But anyway, if we did that, then I think the program costs would go way down because we would get 36,000 people recycling rather than just 6,000. And by the way, the majority of the people who come to our recycling center are from the county.
Mr. Mayor, and also with regards to that, I think the numbers that were tossed out was under the pretense of the individuals they currently serve, which county and city currently have an actual bin at their location, if I'm wrong, right? So I guess that where I'm looking for is not necessarily to go waste numbers, that's not my intention, but to make sure that, you know, I guess county and city both combined are on this together. Now, I, you know, for me, brainstorming is taking it a step further and saying, well, just cities stepping completely out of the recycling business altogether, even with regards to our recycling center, allowing ways to operate it, allowing ways to take it over, and under the stipulation, still have it open to the general public who don't have a bin to still be able to take stuff in. I think there's, these are the ideas that need to come about. I mean, we're at the table. We need to talk, Rortaro is the most green city in New Mexico, and yet I would venture estimate that maybe 20% of our throwaways make it to the recycling center at best.
Less than 15%.
So, I mean, less than 15%. And I mean, you see the acceleration of the cell and what that's going to cost us. All these costs are driven from something. And so I'm looking for ideas into how to bring that cost down and at the same point, de-accelerate the need for that cell. If we can push it out to five years, even better. But I think right now, the city, Counselor Hon, if I'm not mistaken, is what, two years? For a new cell?
I have to research that on my own. I know that our tonnage is going down, and that's part of what's causing our shortfall. And then the previous debt, and then inflationary factors of 1.6% times 10 years, I mean, all these things start to add up. So that's what has got us to where we are. And to be fair, there has not been an increase in 13 years. So I think these are interesting ideas, and I'll take them back to the committee tomorrow, and it'll be another long one.
Counselor Hon, I think one of the things too is that there was an increase of, I want to say, pit run. There was an increase in price that the town or the board was, increased the price to the different entities to purchase, and the price became competitive with what you can buy out in the market so that people could buy it from them. And that was a revenue source that was coming in too, so you might consider using that like down toward, you know, it could be competitive or aggressive, because it actually helps when people are removing that dirt for them or, you know, basically free. They're hauling it off instead of having to have a contract to command and move it. You might consider... Counselor Hon? Did you come?
Is there a criteria or something that your board has on what your responsibilities are versus what the town's responsibility is in playing a part of that? Because recycling is my favorite word. I talked all about it during my campaign.
Right.
Is it good to throw the trash for the tonnage and the money that you get, or is it better to recycle, according to your board?
You know, I've been at two or three landfill meetings in the last two or three weeks. I haven't been since I was a board, so I'm learning. But recycling, I can tell you, for this board, recycling is a huge effort, and our numbers indicate that, in fact, that's part of the problem. We're doing too much recycling.
Too much, yeah, okay.
No, seriously.
Well, as I said, there's tonnage at the landfill is what we're trying to...
You pay for it. You pay for it on land, and the other... Let me get back to you on it and let me know.
Because I have just so many ideas as far as recycling and how the town can get more involved in that and our employees and, you know, getting the community to hop on board.
The reason that you're losing tonnage at the landfill is the economy. Okay? The downturn, the downturn in construction is the biggest, was the biggest driver of trash to the landfill. And when that went south, that's when you started seeing this happen. But recycling, the recycling center has not really picked up sufficiently to make up the tonnage. Because it's only, this is a report that French gave us last year, that we're still at less than 15% of our tonnage is going to recycling center. And because it's all voluntary now, but here's the problem, and I was just discussing this with Councilman Gonzalez, and that is that if you're in the county and you have waste managers that pick up your trash, that's a separate contract than the amount of money that you pay to the county for your trash. So $15 a year? No, I wonder. Or 100. So, you know, depending upon where you're commercial, residential, but I understand that if you pay that tonnage, that's to run the convenience centers and for trash that goes into the center. But in order for you to make a program of recycling to work where everybody participates and able to get a better percentage, is that you have to have it so that it's mandatory to get into it and give you the product or the ability to do recycling. So if you want to have curbside, it's got to be mandatory for everybody. And in order to do that, to make it work, you've got to have curbside trash picking.
Well, here's where we can collaborate with the county and...
Counselor Cantu, did you want to make a report on TCEDC?
Well, I have been to one board meeting, and their first one is going to be on the 23rd of this month. I just went to the friends of the TCEDC get-together they have on Saturday, and it's really a matter of brainstorming as far as how they can keep operating and receive their funding, which is crucial to the community. There's about 1,300 people that are making their living off of that organization.
Thank you. Counselor? If I could give you just one real quick report, this is with regards to the regional coalition of landlub communities. The one initiative that the regional coalition is looking at undertaking is with regards to, I mean, we've comprised ourselves more away from a lobbyist for landlub to a more economic development-driven organization via landlub, which is utilizing some of the spin-off money that comes from the labs initiatives and missions. So the one thing we're about to undertake is to start getting to negotiations with regards to collaboration of broadband initiative through the Northern Publos and also further down in Espinola into the Santa Fe area. And where that helps us out with regards to Taus and my activeness on this board is the fact that they want to utilize Kit Carson's model, but not only their model, but the contractors involved, so that we can keep the local contractors, particularly that have been working on the broadband project for the last four years, which I know several of them, which has pretty much saved them from bankruptcy or actually having to move from Taus, that this would keep that going because they're already certified and approved contractors through the broadband initiative. So just one brief update with regards to how they want to create connectivity from, Taus is broadband link all the way through into Santa Fe, San Antonio, so Paloquim, Opaquiling, all that entire area. Just a reminder.
And thank you, Councilman Gonzalez. And what's going on with that nominating committee?
Nominating committee, we're still in holding right now. We are, they're in the process, the 11th is the deadline for all applicants to get in their resumes. And then we will make decisions based on that at our second nominating meeting, giving direction to the board of our nominees. So we're kind of just in the holding pattern right now, waiting to see who are the individuals that are interested. And our first meeting for nominating, I believe, is May 10th. Our second meeting, I'm sorry, Counselor.
You're on May 4th?
No. We're doing them consecutively, same week, May 10th and May 12th, I think is where we're meeting.
Can you keep us appraised and consult with us at the appropriate time? Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. When I sit on that, thanks to Councilman Peralta, I sit on the hospital committee. What is it called, anyway? What's the official name now?
Community Healthcare Advocacy Board or something like that?
We met and, you know, a couple of recommendations were made to the hospital board. And one of the things that they came back to us and said, well, the hospital board was directing to go out and prepare to come to the county to propose a GRT, an increase to GRT. So we met, met and brainstormed. You know, basically, we made a recommendation back to the board that we need to look at all avenues, because right now, there is a 12th of the, 1/12th of the GRT that's in place that will be sent to the state for match for the indigent care. And that has not, we don't know exactly what dollar amount that's going to be bringing back to the hospital. And because of the Obamacare that's been in place and more people are going to be insured, we don't know how that revenue hole that the hospital says they have is going to be filled. So one of the recommendations that we made is to go back to the board and ask them that they might hire a financial specialist to look if there is any other, first of all, what is the hospital shooting for? Are they continuing to move that dollar further and further out so it's harder to achieve? Or is there a set amount, a dollar amount that they're trying to achieve? And then recommend to hire a financial specialist to see if there's another avenue beside GRT that the hospital can go after. So those are just some recommendations. One of the other things that they brought to us was that, one of the problems was that they haven't been receiving timely payments from the state on the $1.5 million monies that the state was going to match that came from the county, that they haven't been receiving timely payments, and they're like four months in their rears. And so we both... And so, we both agreed, the town and the county have both agreed that we would write a letter through the appropriate, I guess, entity that is putting out that money, so that we might receive those monies in a more timely manner, because it's putting a hardship on the hospital. So, right now, we're looking at that to figure out, you know, who the letter needs to go to and that type of stuff. So, the county is also writing one and would be a collaborative effort to try to get that done. Anything else on this side? Not, I'll go ahead to go into, can you?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I know that, you know, it just occurs to me that this is just the kind of conversation should be having in a long study, because here we are so late, and a lot of this stuff. I sit on the juvenile justice board, just as a citizen, and the gang task force committee, you should just be aware of that. I won't give you a report unless you want. But I did, pending your approval, Mr. Mayor and Council, wanted to touch base with Mr. Caldwell, because we had citizens here a couple of weeks back with landlocked issues, and just wanted to status update on that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hawn, I am meeting with Sam Martinez tomorrow at ten a.m. Nope, nine a.m. Hopefully, I'll be well rested.
I'm sure you will be.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead, pending the initiation of special consideration decision regarding the following, executive public session information item. Action items of special consideration decision regarding spring ditch and the Abeta water rights lawsuit, decided may be discussed in closed session under Open Meeting Act, Executive Ten Fifteen One Eight Seven, which allows for discussion of penance or burden of litigation. And then, I don't know if that next item needed to be under that also, because it's date for special meeting. I don't know if that needs to be in executive session also, or?
That should be done.
That's to be public, so, councilors, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, signify by say no.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave, and probably most of our viewers go to sleep, I just wanted to relay a call that we got from Dr. Kato in Yelton, Kate, that the board of regents had approved entering into a contracted sale for the property, and while that is forthcoming into the process, they will be approaching us and can cancel the proposed agreement with physical transfer of property.
Excellent.
So, how long, Mr. Caldwell, do you have any idea?
Three or four hours.
At the minimum.
This conveyor, members of the council, you know, I think you're going to drive that, the answer to that question. I anticipate it's going to take at least a half hour. Hopeful, incidentally, I don't have a problem saving this to executive session. I'm hopeful that the result of this executive session is to discuss whether we need to have a much longer meeting in the form of either a work study or combine executive work study with public, some kind of altitude to public input. So, they said that's helpful to the public to explain this executive session, so we don't continue to waste time. That's all I have to say on that. I mean, obviously, we'll come back out of the executive session with something.
Unless the council has any objections, I don't allow the clerk to leave, because it's been indicated by the town attorney that they need a formal action. I can take notes for whatever.
Good night, Renee.
Good night.
Thank you, Renee.
Hi, Renee.
Lucky dog.
To see if she had a charger for my balls.
Oh, I probably had one. I didn't bring my briefcase.
Bye, Renee.
Bye.
Mr. Caldwell?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The record should reflect that the council went into executive session regarding item Tennessee on the agenda to discuss the spring ditch and Abeta water rights lawsuits. Only if those items were discussed, there were no actions taken and notices were made.
Do we have a motion to accept the county, I mean, the town attorney's report?
So.
Do we have a second?
One second.
We have to have a little call, all in favor, signify by say no.
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
And, Mr. Mayor, just so everyone knows, Rick Dawson and I are kind of tag teaming, taking minutes for the remainder of the meeting. And it's getting late, and I'm getting a little bit goofy, but the Open Meetings Act actually requires that everyone take a vote coming out of executive session. I don't know if we normally do that or not, but just for the sake of prolonging this madness, if you go ahead and do a roll call vote, and I'll start with Councilor Hawn.
Yes.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilor M. Two.
Yes.
Councilor Peralta.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so then, we'll go ahead and move on to set a date for a special meeting?
Thank you, Mayor and councilors, again, acknowledging that it's been a long night. The purpose of this item, without revealing any of the things discussed in executive session, is really to try to follow that discussion up with some more detail and back-specific information that informs both of those matters, i.e. the Abeta settlement and the spring ditch lawsuit. The town currently contracts with D. B. Stevens and Associates to consult on water rights matters, particularly in support of these two matters of litigation. And I'd love to get them up here as soon as possible to conduct a fairly thorough, what will probably be an executive session work study, that's not a contradiction in terms, to really dive into these things. And I know that there's some limited availability on the part of the hydrologist. I know that there's availability on the twenty-first of April. Twenty-second, of course, we've had a council meeting that night. And I'm almost certain there's availability on the twenty-third. So, to the extent that any of those present options, and to the extent we can come to an agreement on finding that now, I'll go and try to schedule that tomorrow.
Dick, if there's availability, you said the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third?
Yeah, you know, the one I'm not so sure about is the twenty-second. And I think I might have excluded that as an option, just because we have a council meeting that day. Now, one thing I should also point out, this is not necessarily a decision you have to make tonight. I mean, I could kind of work with all of your schedules, as long as we post the meeting pursuant to the Open Meeting Act.
For me, the twenty-second and twenty-third would work.
Okay.
I, the twenty-third would not work for me, I have another board meeting on that night.
So, I would say, and Jake, is this going to be a daytime executive, I would assume? Because we're going to need some time on it.
That would be my recommendation.
So, I would say if we do the twenty-second in the morning, maybe nine a.m.
That's not a Tuesday, Rick.
Yeah, it is a Tuesday.
Our Tuesday.
Oh, it's our Tuesday?
It's our Tuesday, yeah.
I'm here all the time anyways.
And Mayor and councilmembers, is there any chance that I could get one alternate date? In case this twenty-second is not an option, I understand the twenty-first is not. Councilwoman, Councilwoman, is your meeting on the twenty-third during the day?
It's at five thirty in the evening.
Is there any possibility that you would be willing to attend a meeting during the day?
During the day, yeah, though that's my first T C E D C board meeting.
You will prepare me for it by lots of.
Data.
Can I just, by showing of nods, ask whether the twenty-third might also be an option?
Yes.
With the understanding that the twenty-second is the preference?
Yes.
I'll go and, you know, make sure we let everyone know and publish notice pursuant to Open Meetings Act. And I think it's only fair to the public that it be clear that this meeting is likely to be purely executive session with very little information divulged as a result of it. Having said that, I think there's a great deal of hope that then, that spurs a great deal of additional public interaction. That's fine, as much as I can say on that, but I'll defer to the council for any more.
Any other comments?
Head down, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me?
I have none.
Motion to adjourn?
Before you do, Mayor, just one thing. I passed out two documents. The one is the official agenda published by the town and the county for your Thursday meeting, which will be here a lot sooner than before you started this meeting. And the second one is a ever-growing list of priorities reflected by yourself as council, but also by the county. And number seven, with the line underneath the points district, is everything above that, one through seven, we covered first meeting.
So, at that meeting, maybe we can, on Thursday, maybe we can amend another date for an additional meeting of the two bodies?
That is the hope of staff at the town and the county, because a number of these issues, we've come to what we feel are reasonable resolution. And per the request of Councilman Peralta, which I think is a great idea, we will try to get a position paper out with the town staff position and a brief summary on each of these issues here will be made on Thursday. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So.
On favor, sit.
It was in a safe record.
Oh, the second, sorry, I'm getting tired. On favor, sit. Anybody, anybody opposed, you can sit here by yourself. My wife just texted me, everything okay?